Good evening. It is six o'clock, which is the appointed time for the regular meeting of the Holland City Council. It is April thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. I'd like to welcome everyone here and call the meeting to order. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Bird.
Present.
Raymond.
Here.
Peters. Corbin. Coronado.
Here.
Aron Horst here. Hookstra.
Here.
Raymond.
Here.
Mayor Box.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Wonderful, thank you. We're going to begin the meeting this evening, as we have for many years. First with an opening prayer, followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we would invite you to join us if you would like. Please pray with me. Lord, in difficult days, give us guidance. Help each of us in the room and throughout the city to make decisions, to make decisions because they have impact, and the actions that we take have impact. Each of us is here to try to do the best we can every day, to serve the people of the city that we love. Some days bring joy and others bring pain. When we rise in the morning, we never know what may occur in the world around us and how we may be called to respond. Every day, each of us is asked to make decisions, large and small, that will affect the people of this community. We rely on each other. We rely on you to give us strength and discernment to guide our decisions and our actions. What we choose to say or to not say, what we choose to do or to not do, has impact. Give us eyes to see, give us ears to hear. Remind us to look and listen and learn before we speak and act. Give us the strength to know and to do what's right, even when decisions become difficult. Help us to think clearly and thoughtfully, not rush to judgment, but to weigh the impact and find answers through careful consideration. Help us to do what we've committed to do, to serve every person in this city as best as we can, with your help, with your guidance. We'll find the right path and follow it. We ask this in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next are our consent agenda items. These items are considered to be fairly routine, and they will be, they have been previously reviewed by council members and will be enacted in one motion unless a member of the public or a member of the city council asks to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed in its regular order and normal sequence of events on the regular agenda. But before I ask for that, Kathy, would you please review the consent agenda items for us?
Four B, approval of minutes, March sixteenth, regular meeting, March twenty-three, twenty twenty-two, study session. Four C, oath of office. Four D, tax abatement, PA one ninety-eight speculative building and speculative building, strategic label, seventy-two West Sixty-four Street. Four E, tax abatement, PA one ninety-eight, bypass international corporation, seventy-two West Sixty-four Street. Four F, tax abatement, PA one ninety-eight, Tommy Car Wash Systems, thirteen twenty-one M forty. Four G, tax abatement, PA one ninety-eight, Hudsonville Creamery and Ice Cream LLC, three forty-five East Forty-eighth Street. Four H, industrial development district request, forged by design LLC, four two eight West Twenty-fourth Street. Four I, claims filed against the city. Four J, annual license renewal, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Four K, transportation award bid, street tree planting project. Four L, transportation services, award bid, twenty twenty-two skip milling and paving project. Four M, purchasing, public safety services, police and fire operations, drone. Four N, public safety services, police operation, purchase energy recovery will. Four O, management administrative services, downtown group, approve twenty twenty-two double up food bucks grant for Holland Farmers Market. Four P, management administrative services, downtown group, civic center place, purchase of rolled floor covering. Four Q, management administrative services, fiscal year twenty twenty-two strategic plan and business plan, quarterly progress update, January to March twenty twenty-two.
Great, thank you Kathy. Is there any member of the audience that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none, is there a member of council that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none there either. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the consent agenda?
Move, oops, move that we approve the consent agenda for April thirteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Move by Aaron Horst, is there support?
Second.
Support by Coronado, any discussion? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Bird.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Peters. Corbin.
Yes.
Coronado.
Yes.
Aron Horst.
Yes.
Hookstra.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. As part of the Open Meetings Act of the state of Michigan, we provide the opportunity for members of the public to address council at every one of our regular meetings and our study sessions as well. Matter of fact, all of the public meetings that we have here in the city of Holland provide for public comment under the Open Meetings Act. We have a limit of five minutes per person. Each person may speak just one time. You'll notice that there are three lights on the dais. There's a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. The green light means you're doing well on time. The yellow light means you have one minute left, and the red light means that your time has expired, and we are strict about that. So, when you approach the podium, we would ask the, your name and the municipality, the city or other governmental organization that you live in, so that we know whether you're a resident of the city of Holland or not. Now, having said that, is there anyone who would like to address council at this time? Please come forward, and would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Mark Spencer from Holland, Michigan. I think you've given my church an idea with the lights. I don't know if I care for that, but I do have position papers for each one of you. I don't know how that would be distributed.
We can have you give those to the assistant city manager or the city clerk, yes.
Alrighty. We'd informed Keith here a couple of weeks back that we would be presenting our thoughts on the request for an amendment to the anti-discrimination ordinance from August of twenty twenty. And again, I want to thank you for your service to our community as we work together to preserve a great heritage that we have here at Holland. This comment that I have will be in three parts presented in succession with the folks that will be behind me. We're here tonight to urge the city council to adopt the amendment presented back in August of twenty twenty by Councilman Bird. The purpose of this amendment is to plug any holes in the wording of the ordinance that might produce an impasse between the city and its religious organizations. It's been noted that in section twenty-five, four exemptions, paragraph B, that it fails to clearly identify tax-exempt nonprofit corporations organized and operated solely or in part for religious purposes. Some may think there's no threat to our local Christian culture, which would demand defining these organizations within the ordinance. After all, from its founding by Dr. Van der Althea and his congregation, Holland's been a conservative Christian community which respects and honors its churches. We are all acutely aware of the rapid nationwide implementation of social programs which blatantly attack our Christian heritage. What caused, what used to be left to, be able to be left to common sense and logic must now be supported by detailed statements and defined terms. We're here to interpose on behalf of those who would be negatively impacted by what is not stated in the ordinance. I illustrate this charge by reading for you an article by Phil Schreiber dated twenty-two March of twenty twenty-two, published on the Blaze website, and the next reader will read that article for you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Yes, please come forward, and would you please state your name and municipality for the record? And there are a couple of you here, so I just want to make sure, I didn't mention this at the beginning. Make sure that you do speak into the microphone, because we're broadcasting the meeting, and we want to make sure that everybody at home has the opportunity to hear you as well.
Absolutely. All right, this is my family behind me. My name is Doug Potgetter, and I live in Holland. And I'm going to pick up from the previous presentation by reading that article by Phil Schreiber. And I quote, "Two consecutive justices on the Supreme Court this week voiced their support for the hiring rights of religious organizations, arguing that such organizations should not be compelled to employ individuals who do not share their religious views. To force religious organizations to hire messengers and other personnel who do not share their religious views would undermine not only the autonomy of many religious organizations, but also their continued viability, Justice Sam Alito argued in a statement he and Justice Clarence Thomas issued Monday. The comments from Alito and Thomas came as the court declined to take up a dispute involving the Seattle Union Gospel Mission, a Christian nonprofit that was sued after refusing to hire an LGBT applicant to serve in its legal aid clinic. In an original ruling on the matter, King County Superior Court Judge Karen Donahue dismissed the suit filed against the mission by bisexual attorney Matt Woods, claiming the nonprofit was within its rights to refuse to hire Woods, since as a religious group it was exempt from the state's anti-discrimination law regarding sexual orientation. But last year, the Washington Supreme Court reversed the ruling and sent the case back down to the lower court specifically to review whether the nonprofit's religious exemption applies to all positions of employment. The Blaze reported at the time that the ruling could open the door to forcing religious organizations to hire LGBT individuals and other employees who do not share their beliefs. In their Monday statement, Alito and Thomas seemed to agree that such a ruling would not only undermine the autonomy of religious organizations, but could also lead to their extinction. If states could compel religious organizations to hire employees who fundamentally disagree with them, many religious nonprofits would be extinguished from participation in public life, perhaps by those who disagree with their theological views most vigorously, the justices warned. That, they said, would not only infringe on the group's rights to freely exercise religion, but would greatly impoverish our nation's civic and religious life. Though the justices agreed that the case had not yet reached a ripe enough stage for the high court to grant a review, they foreshadowed a future ruling in the dispute. Because of the interlocutory posture of this case, we concur in the denial, in the denial of surcerary at this time, Alito wrote. But the day may soon come when we must decide whether the autonomy guaranteed by the First Amendment protects religious organizations' freedom to hire co-religionists without state or judicial interference." End quote. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your service to our community.
Alright, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Certainly, please come forward, and would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Jason Cochran and my family, and we're from Park Township. So I'm picking up from the previous presentation that commentary from none other than two Supreme Court justices whose job it is to interpret the constitutionality of laws is reason enough for us to adopt this amendment. There is a hole produced by the vagueness and generalization found in the reading of the ordinance as it stands that cries to be plugged. I want to introduce you to something you may never have heard before, but it is essential to your position as city council member. It is called the doctrine of lesser magistrates. As elected officials, you occupy a position described as the lesser magistrate. The doctrine of lesser magistrates was systematized in Magdeburg Confession of fifteen fifty. The word magistrate is an old term referring to any civil governmental position, either elected or appointed. The lesser magistrate doctrine declares that when the superior or higher civil authority makes unjust or immoral laws or decrees, the lesser or lower ranking civil authority has a right and a duty to refuse obedience to that superior authority. It works this way. If the federal government issues an unjust law, the governor or state legislature would be responsible to defy and actively oppose it. The same responsibilities rest with the lesser magistrates of the positions of mayor and city council. This doctrine is not new, for even Emperor Trajan said to an appointed subordinate authority while presenting him a sword, "Use this against my enemies if I give righteous commands, but if I give unrighteous commands, use it against me." If you would like to, like more information on this doctrine, please contact Pastor Spencer at six one six three five five seven zero two seven, and a short primer will be provided to you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Ryan Spencer from the city of Holland here, picking up where Jason left off. To conclude, we'd like to present the version of the event which gave birth to the doctrine of lesser magistrates. In fifteen seventeen, Martin Luther nailed his ninety-five thesis on the door of the church in Wittenberg, Germany, unleashing the Reformation. Thirty-one years later, on May fifteenth, fifteen forty-eight, Emperor Charles the Fifth imposed his Augsburg interim, demanding all Protestant churches in Germany return under the authority of the Catholic Church. All churches obeyed the edict with the exception of a group of pastors in Magdeburg, Germany. As you can imagine, that did not sit well with the emperor. In October eighteen fifty, Charles the Fifth laid siege to the city. By the time he capitulated to the citizens' resistance, over a thousand citizens perished, along with more than four thousand soldiers. This loss of life was entirely unnecessary had the government respected the individual's sole liberties of the people. The importance of the doctrine of the lesser magistrates is truly a vital doctrine for the city council to study and be prepared to employ should a future situation dictate. Adoption of this amendment will be viewed as the city council standing in the gap for the tax-exempt nonprofit corporations organized and operated solely or in part for religious purposes. Augustine famously stated, "An unjust law is no law at all." And obedience to God always trumps obedience to government if the government is unjust. Our purpose here is to preempt what could be viewed as an unjust ordinance. Therefore, what we are doing here is helping avoid an unnecessary impasse in the future. In adopting this amendment, which particularly secures the protection for tax-exempt nonprofit corporations organized and operated solely or in part for religious purposes, you perform an act that demonstrates your appreciation of the contributions of these organizations to our community, both past, present, and future. Thank you for your time, and we appreciate your service.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
I'm Aslan Van Dyke, and this is my mother, and I'm from Park Township. I believe this issue is important enough to necessitate my appearing to speak on behalf of tax-exempt nonprofit corporations organized and operated solely or in part for religious purposes. I would like to request the council to adopt the amendment as presented in the early morning hours of that August day in twenty twenty. This will serve to bring clarity to the section on exemptions. It seems to me the exemptions section is lacking in precision so that tax-exempt religious nonprofit corporations are not securely protected. We would all agree that these organizations are a great benefit to our community, but if they are not clearly protected, we fear that their services may not be able to continue. I exhort the city council to adopt this amendment so that these important organizations are protected in our community. As a young person, it is my generation as well as future generations that will be either positively or negatively impacted by this important issue. I thank you for your consideration and for your service to our city.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Yes, certainly, please come forward, and as you've heard, please state your name and municipality for the record.
Holland Township.
Great, thank you.
We stand before you tonight to request the city council to adopt the amendment put forward by Councilman Quincy Bird for the purpose of making the section of exemptions clearer and more precise, thereby protecting tax-exempt nonprofit corporations organized and operated solely or in part for religious purposes. The exemptions section is vague regarding protection for tax-exempt religious nonprofit corporations that operate in our community. We simply ask that the council, city council, adopt this amendment in order to ensure these important organizations are protected in our city. We are very grateful for your service to our city, and thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address council? Certainly, please come forward, and again, please state your name and municipality for the record.
Ron Price in Holland, and thank you for your guys' service to our community. My purpose for speaking tonight is to define those who should be protected by the recently adopted ordinance. This ordinance defines some categories, but is vague on others. If one category merits definition, it should be consistent that others would also. If this position, it is this position that brings me out tonight in support of tax-exempt nonprofit corporations organized and operated solely or in part for religious purposes. The need to identify those who could be negatively affected is found in the evolution of words in our culture over the past twenty years. Words exist to allow us to identify and clarify our thoughts. The recent modification of words and terms serves to soften the meaning of uncomfortable topics, making them more palatable. For instance, race discrimination in hiring and college admission is rebranded as affirmative action. Who could possibly be against affirming action? Global warming, which can be measured and challenged, has morphed into climate change, which is nothing new because we no longer have an ice age. War in Afghanistan became overseas contingency operation. Young criminals are now called justice-involved youth. Mandates and taxes have become individual shared responsibility payments. Government spending is now referred to as an investment. Wanting to keep more of your hard-earned money is now called greed. Taking more of someone else's hard-earned money is called paying their fair share or redistribution of wealth. Add an adjective to a previously defined word, and its definition takes a one hundred and eighty-degree turn. Justice, which means getting what you deserve without favor, turns into social justice, getting what you don't deserve because you are favored. These are a few examples, these few examples are reason enough for me to be here and encourage the council to adopt this amendment to secure protection from charges of discrimination levied against tax-exempt nonprofit corporations organized and operated solely or in part for religious purposes. Thank you for being willing to sacrifice to serve this wonderful city of Holland. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record? Sounds like some are a little more enthusiastic about it than others.
I'm Kyle Deliden. I'm from Ganges, and I'm a member of this church. I'd like to just continue from Mr. Price. It has been brought to my attention, there is an opening in the anti-discrimination ordinance passed in August twenty twenty that would allow for charges of discrimination against particular categories of ministries. I am concerned for this, for the possibility of this occurring, and want to encourage the council to adopt this amendment to close cancel this prospect. Tax-exempt nonprofit corporations organized and operated solely or in part for religious purposes must be protected by the city ordinance. An argument can be made, there is no precedent for charges of discrimination having been levied against religious organizations or corporations operated solely or in part for religious purposes. However, the same argument can be made for a lack of precedent of discrimination against the defined categories of protection. Therefore, I am here to encourage the council to adopt this amendment to protect these corporations or religious institutions from such future attacks. I also want to thank you for your service in this fair city.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Certainly, would you please come forward, please state your name and municipality for the record?
My name's John Loss, I'm here in Holland City. I want to encourage the city council to consider the presence of the word expression in one of the defined protected categories. While the same word is absent in section twenty-five dash four, paragraph B, it would be assumed that expression would yield itself to words since behavior and appearance are specifically mentioned in that paragraph. Therefore, expression should be part of the definition of a tax-exempt nonprofit corporation organized and operated solely or in part for religious purposes. A religious organization or corporation must be free to express their sincerely held religious beliefs free from threat of persecution or prosecution. It is for this reason I am here tonight, joining these others and exhorting the council to adopt this amendment, securing protection for our tax-exempt nonprofit corporations organized and operated solely or in part for religious purposes. I too want to express my gratitude for your service to our dear city.
Great, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Darlene Dykstra, I'm in Georgetown Township, this is my husband. I consider it a blessing to be able to address the council this evening on the necessity of bringing clarity to the anti-discrimination ordinance adopted by the council of August twenty twenty. Words have meaning and therefore require precision. It has been brought to my attention, the generality used in the ordinance in section twenty-five, four, paragraph B, which identifies religious organizations exempt from charges of discrimination, leaves open the prospect of charges being leveled against tax-exempt nonprofit corporations organized and operated solely or in part for religious purposes. Therefore, I urge, I join these good citizens in encouraging the council to adopt this amendment. I think it's vital that religious organizations are free to express their God-given beliefs. Christian expression has been attacked with attempts to silence it for over two thousand years. Religious expression is one of the unalienable rights given to us by God and is to be protected by the government. Realizing that long-held religious protections are coming under increasing threat of extinction in the present cultural climate, I believe it's important that we bring clarity to the definition of these nonprofit corporations. And I too want to thank you for your service and your time on behalf of our communities.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Anne Hunrickson-Zeland. And tonight I'm presenting something from a friend of mine who cannot be here, and she's from Alligan, but we often pray together. The nation, the United States of America, was founded by men who sole purpose was to leave a land, England, where they had no right to express their faith in God, whom they believed in, and His word, the Bible. Being able to live as free men and women from the tyranny of government must have been extremely important, because many of them laid down their very lives for it. These men fought for their religious freedom of faith because they knew how important it was for them and the generations that would follow. Freedom to express our faith is given to us by God and not by man. We are here for the same passion, to be able to express our faith without fine or impose civil liability on any people or faith-based organization in Holland, Michigan. Anytime the Christian community starts to see an infringement on any of our basic religious rights or freedoms, it certainly makes us want to speak up and out for these rights and freedoms that were given to us by God. Everyone has something that they would be deeply hurt by or indignant with if someone were to say, "This can no longer be part of you. You will no longer be allowed to express what you think or believe." For many people, faith is that identifying feature. It is one of the most significant identification connections that we have. It is who we are, and we are not ashamed of the gospel of Jesus Christ our Lord and want others to experience what we have in our relationship with Him. So we share or express our faith. And for anyone to take that away from us would be just as painful for us as for someone taking away something that is so significant to you by saying, "We do not agree with you, therefore, we will no longer be able to have the right to express to others what you believe." We still have in this nation the First Amendment of our Constitution, which states that everyone in the United States of America has the right to express his or her own religion or not to express religion if they so choose. or not to express religion if they so choose or abridging the freedom of speech, which seems to not diminish or reduce in scope our freedom of speech. Not only is expressing our faith a great privilege, but it is also our right as citizens of this great nation and of this city. So I thank you for your time and what you do.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Sure. My name is Howard Bones Jr. I live in Lake Town Township. And I wasn't supposed to speak tonight. I was here primarily to listen. I'm not a lawyer. I don't play one on TV. However, I do understand a little bit about America and a little bit about freedom and a little about, little bit about God as I understand Him. And I do have the opinion that our rights are given by God and not by government. That being said, the founders of this great country of America saw fit to include in the First Amendment of our constitution a right to practice of religion or freedom of religion, both. You know, what a wonderful founding document that is. I know that there have been many, many of good faith and good conscience who have been stopped in their tracks by nuisance lawsuits. It doesn't cost much to file a suit, but it costs a whole lot to defend against it. By passing that amendment, I'm of the opinion, although I'm not a lawyer, like I said, that you will help protect those who do choose to practice their religion as they see fit, which is one of the freedoms guaranteed. So I encourage you to take a good hard look at that amendment and to pass it. Holland was founded as, by a man of faith and we have legacies to maintain, I believe that. Freedom is one of them. By not passing that amendment, in my opinion, you will be limiting some of the freedom of religion that our founding fathers chose to guarantee in the magnificent constitution. Thank you all for your service and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Mercedes Watts. I live in Georgetown Township. I just wanted to come up here and reintroduce myself to all of you and let everyone know that I am running for Twentieth Circuit Court. The one question I always get asked whenever I tell people that I'm running for judge is they say, why do you want to be a judge? And the answer is always the same. I've always wanted to be a judge. I never wanted to be an attorney. I only became an attorney because it was a requirement to become a judge. I believe I can help the most people as a judge. I believe judges have a huge impact on people's lives and I want to be a positive impact. The plan had always been to be a district court judge because I believe you see more, more people go through district court than they do circuit court and I want to be able to help as many people as I can. But when this current position was created, I was encouraged by my family to go for it because it is for family court. And family law has a very special place in my heart. Now, as a public defender, is the first time in my legal career that I am not actively practicing some form of family law. I love family law. I'm a wife, I'm a mother and I understand the needs of a family and the challenges that they face. And I've seen what our court systems can do to families. And what I really just want to change and accomplish by being judge is to keep families together. I've practiced throughout multiple counties in Michigan and what I'm seeing is that a lot of family court judges are, and referees are a bit too quick to sign an order removing a child from their families without doing their proper due diligence. They receive a petition, they take it at face value instead of as allegations, unsubstantiated allegations at that. And they don't hold hearings on it and a child is removed, a child is traumatized, a family is traumatized. And down the line, you find out that what was on that petition was just allegations. Throughout my career, I've worked for legal services and owned my own firm and I've worked closely with CPS investigators. And I've had them flat out tell me that they did not investigate the allegations. They received the allegations, they put it on a petition, they signed it as fact and they send it to the court to be signed and have the child removed. I just don't think that's right. I don't think that's fair. I believe everyone deserves to be heard. Everyone deserves their time in court. And I understand, I'm not naive. I understand that sometimes what's on that petition is going to be absolutely true. But we still don't know that unless the hearing is held. And what some people do not realize is that it is within the judge's discretion on when that hearing gets held. So if they wanted to wait until there is an opening in their docket, they could do that. But if they received a petition and they are fearing for this child's emotional, mental, physical safety, they can say, we need to hold a hearing right now. I want to hold an emergency hearing tomorrow. They are completely within their right to do that and I'm just not seeing that. So that is something that I would like to change in my courtroom. That is something that I would like to do, to just hold a hearing. And I, I believe, I don't know this for certain, I believe a lot of judges do this just to keep things moving, to keep the docket flowing. But like I said, now a child has been removed, children have been traumatized, families have been traumatized. They don't get their kids back for six, seven, eight months and it comes out that everything that was in that petition or was extremely exaggerated or flat out lies. So that is why I'm running. That is why I want this seat. I am still collecting signatures for my petition. I do need a certain amount of signatures just to get onto the ballot. I will be collecting signatures up until the very last day of next week when they are due. So if you would like to sign my petition, I will be here. And that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel at this time? Please come forward. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much. I'm Paul Kraus and I'm from Park Township. It's a pleasure to be with all of you tonight. Like Mercedes, I am also running for the Twentieth Circuit Court, new judgeship that's been created here in Ottawa County. As many of you may know, our governor signed into law a bill in February that allowed Ottawa County to add a Fifth Circuit Court judge. That is an amazing opportunity for our county as our population continues to grow and our dockets continue to get bigger. And we need to have extra judges to be able to effectuate justice within our county. It's wonderful to be back. I was a deputy city of attorney for the city of Holland. So this feels like home for me to be here. Worked at Cunningham Dahlman as a council, family law practitioner locally. Prior to that, I was an assistant attorney general in the state of Iowa for nine years. My wife accepted a professorship at Hope College and so that's what brought us to the community. So I actually followed her career, joined Cunningham Dahlman and then from there went on to join the prosecutor's office where I serve as our senior assistant prosecuting attorney in charge of our family law unit for the county. That unit handles cases involving children, so abuse and neglect cases, handles juvenile delinquency cases, mental health commitment hearings and anything that involves a family is what I have the pleasure to work on. This new family court position is going to be a family court job. So it's going to handle divorce cases, custody cases, child abuse and neglect cases, juvenile delinquency cases and matters that involve families and children. My seventeen years as an attorney have kind of prepared me for this experience and it's exactly in the area that this judgeship that will be handling. I heard Mercedes talk a little bit earlier about her passion as to why she got, decided to run for this position. My passion is a little bit different. I wanted to go into public service. I wasn't sure what area of public service that I wanted to serve. When I did a clerkship with the attorney general's office, it wasn't in the area of child abuse law. Eventually, they liked me, I liked them. They offered me a position to work with the attorney general's office. And when I got there, they told me that it was going to be in the area of child abuse law as I was kind of the new guy, new guy there and nobody else wanted to do it. And that was a pretty rough experience at first, trying to learn a new area and get proficient at it. But I surrounded myself with good mentors, surrounded myself with good training and ended up handling child abuse cases for over nine years as an assistant attorney general before we moved here to the city of Holland. So that is experience that is so important to have, to be able to work with families, to be a problem solver, to understand families and what their needs are. Cunningham Dahlman, I represented families and individuals that were wrongly accused of child abuse. So I've seen that side of it as well. And we're going to need a judge in Ottawa County that can show balance and has experience on both sides. Somebody that has been a prosecutor but also has been there with families when they're going through tough times as well. Huge believer in problem solving courts. Started with the blessing of our prosecutor this year, Ottawa County's first restorative justice program for youth that have, or first time offenders misdemeanor cases where they can meet with the victim and mediate their disputes outside of court. Such a valuable program. And I'm so glad to be a part of that and one of the architects of that particular program. There's also a role for problem solving courts in the abuse and neglect system so that we can safely and quickly put families back together after a child has to be removed. Only a small percentage of cases that come into the child welfare system, a petition is required to be filed. Of those cases where a petition is necessary to be filed, we need to pull together defense counsel, prosecutors, social workers and the judge to be collaborative in nature and to figure out the safest and quickest way to be able to put that family back together. And that's what I intend to do as, as a judge if I'm so lucky to, to serve in that capacity. It would be an honor to serve all of you as your judge and I'd be honored to have your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Carla Price, Holland. And Carmen, I guess too. Just back to the topic of religious freedom, just what's heavy on my heart, just wanting to share. When I think people who come up and want to share about protecting religious rights and the freedom to be able to share what we believe, it's definitely not to be able to have the right to discriminate. It's, it's the right to be able to worship and, and share what we believe, but yet also, but also be loving. We want to be able to be loving to whoever it might be. And I don't want it to come across in the wrong way as if it's asking for more right to, to be more hurtful, but rather just worship in the way we believe and be able to state what we believe. And really, we should be the most loving, what I think our, our people would. People in, in religions would say that they want to be able to love people well. And my husband would be able to say it better as a history buff, but he's just shared examples over time when laws have become broader and not more specific to protect people or religious rights. It's led to more injustice rather than justice. And so just to be able to specifically protect the rights, I think, of, of religion as our country has been founded on, I think, is what I think a lot of people are sharing tonight. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
My name is Dr. Gin Greenlee and I'm from North Holland. I too am here to ask your request for the approval of the amendment to modify it because I am appealing also on the basis of being a lesser magistrate, a precinct delegate. When something is unjust, we are with full rights responsible in speaking up. I'm appealing to a higher magistrate, God himself, the Father and Lord of Jesus Christ, the living word, the word that we are to honor and treat as who He is. He is the word and His principles are in our constitution. This is part of our constitutional rights. We have a right to be able to maintain our freedoms and our protection of speech and liberty, of speech and religion and all those other ones. But anyway, because of what has happened before, we have seen, as has been said, there's been a strong push towards more radicalism, towards socialism slash communism, towards totalitarianism, towards transgenderism, towards DEI, towards all this movement that is affecting not only us as individuals, but this community which has a rich heritage, having been founded by a strong Christian conservative. And our nation for that matter, there's no other constitution in the world that has helped maintain the freedoms that we have in this country. Why would other people from other countries want to still be coming to our country if they didn't envy what we have? We have a constitution that has worked for two hundred years. Other countries don't even have constitutions that last for twenty years. So I do appeal for the protection of religious expression to be maintained in this community before we have problems where we see complaints coming through and people are being disparaged and discriminated against as we have seen in Jack the Baker and other scenarios that I won't go into. You're all familiar with that. Thank you and thank you for your work in preserving our community to have the integrity and the transparency it needs to have that the founder Ben Ralty was depending on.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else?
Freedom of expression. Amendment to that August twenty twenty late night, early morning vote session that occurred. I, I would ask you all to support those of us that would like to continue to have free expression of our religious beliefs, of our, our God given and then also ratified by the, the states and the union at that time and the amendments, the First Amendment to the US Constitution. I, I would implore all of you to consider freedom of expression, not only for a few, but for all. I would thank you for your, your service. My wife and I have been here on many occasions, not lately, but we've spent a lot of time, not near as much as you folks have in almost every Wednesday of the month and many other hours that you put in. And we appreciate that because there's lots of hard work going into housing additions into everything else. And we, a lot of us people that drive up and down the streets each day and go about our business don't, don't appreciate that for the most part, but there's a lot of people, all you folks included, the eight council members and you, Mr. Mayor, that spend lots of hours. We appreciate you considering this amendment to that, that ordinance that was passed in August of twenty. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel at this time? And Mr. Story of Holland, Michigan, would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Thanks for giving me extra time, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I am Jim Story. I'm the county commissioner for the Alligan portion of the city of Holland proudly. And I just wanted to update the council and my friends on both sides of Thirty Second Street on what's been happening in Alligan County lately. There are two group, two objectives that the Board of Commissioners has adopted for the use of the American Rescue Plan dollars that we've received. Number one is expanding broadband internet access into, in our county for underserved and non-served areas. The estimate is that there are about thirty-four percent of our county's residents who do not have high speed access. And so we have formed a broadband expansion study group that happily includes a member of the staff of the Board of Public Works of the city of Holland. And they are well into working to identify those, where exactly those gaps are in service so that we can attract providers to fill those gaps with the lure of some of this capital money that, that we are going to receive. Not only it's been received, but that there's much in the pipeline, interestingly designated for rural areas, which of course, Alligan County qualifies for. The other area for ARPA expansion is water study. Two years ago, we commissioned a study to identify where we may have problems with the, both the quantity and the quality of the water in our county. the, both the quantity and the quality of the water in our county. The quantity issue is pretty much in the northern part of the county and extends from that gap that has been identified in our good neighbors in Ottawa County. The quality issue is in the southern part where we have had experienced PFAS contamination of some water wells in the Seago and Plainwell area. And that group is just starting its work, but hopes to commission a technique that will allow us to, again, more explicitly define where those problems are. Last week, the Allegan County Road Commission adopted a resolution that expanded the use of ORVs on county roads, off-the-road vehicles. On July 1st last year, we adopted an ordinance that permitted ORVs on our county roads except the 30% that the road commission is allowed to take off of the eligible list. Well, the experience has been so positive that three of our townships petitioned the road commission to allow ORVs on all of your county roads, and also other townships petitioned to allow certain segments that had been excluded to be added. So now it's possible, frankly, to leave from the very southern part of our county, South Haven City, which by the way has allowed ORVs on its city streets for some time, to go from there, frankly, all the way to the Mackinac Bridge using various county roads. And then finally, we are in the process of redefining how we want to lay out our courthouse if we are, like Ottawa County, to get a Third Circuit Court judge, which we hope is coming soon. We have about 80, 81 jury trials backlogged in our county as a result of the COVID situation. And so our two Circuit Court judges are working OT a lot just to make sure justice is restored quickly to those who have been waiting in line. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I wish to wish you and the council a very happy Easter this week, and I hope you enjoy the peace and tranquility of that day, and at your direction, be happy to take any questions from the council.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. And the next item on our agenda, written petitions and communications. We do, in addition to allowing for public comment in person during our council meetings, we also have an email that you can use, which is publiccomment@cityofholland.com. It's publiccomment@cityofholland.com. We do not read those emails into the record, but we do accept those that we receive into the record through a voice vote. And what is the pleasure of council in regard to the written petitions and communications?
A move that we accept those?
A move by Coronado, is there support?
Support.
Support by Hookstra. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item, item 10A, adoption of ordinances. Planning Commission proposed rezoning of 13 West Fourth Street, ordinance amendment. Mr. Van Deiken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. This recommendation comes to you through the Planning Commission, so we're going to ask Steve, our souvenir repair man, to come up and provide you some information prior to your ultimate decision this evening.
Great, thank you. Evening, Steve.
Good evening, thank you. So I just have a few brief comments for you. I put up on the screen here a couple maps, obviously labeled current zoning, future land use, so we'll go over those in a minute. The request is, as Matt mentioned, from the Planning Commission. The recommendation is to rezone 13 West Fourth Street to industrial. So 13 Fourth, sorry, 13 West Fourth Street is occupied by West Rock. They are an industrial user, and they would like to do a small addition. However, when, through the adoption of Udo, we essentially rezoned this area to the form-based north downtown district. So what you're looking at on the current zoning map, that yellow color, is that north downtown district. I know it's a little bit hard to pick up because I outlined the property in yellow, but right in the middle of the map is the West Rock property, and obviously they are zoned north downtown. North downtown does not allow for industrial uses, so they are technically in a legal, non-conforming status, and they would not be able to do an addition as currently zoned. So the idea was to, the suggestion from staff was to rezone that property essentially back to industrial. I think the property or the map that you see next to it, the future land use map, as you can see, designates that West Rock property in sort of a pink color. That is essentially the north downtown future land use area. So obviously, when we did Udo, we were looking at the future land use map and rezoned those properties to coordinate with the future land use plan. However, as I mentioned, they want to do an addition. They are in existing industrial use, and so the addition isn't permitted as it's currently zoned. The way that, you know, staff kind of looked at this, a little bit like we've been dealing with some of the other Udo text changes, is that, you know, we made a bunch of changes, and I think we're kind of dialing into some of the specifics, certainly when we get into the text and even with the mapping. So we kind of view this as a correction to the zoning map as part of that Udo adoption process. You look closely at that map and you notice that the water reclamation facility is directly to the north. That is in the gray. That is the industrial zoning district that's out there today. So certainly, the idea of having this property stay or go back to industrial is consistent with what they have around them. You kind of see that same zoning district to the south and to the west at the Padnose facility. They are currently zoned industrial as well. So the Planning Commission took a look at this, held their public hearing, and has also recommended the rezoning change for industrial, for this property. If the zoning is changed, obviously, they would be coming through with a site plan process that would be reviewed by staff as well. So the recommendation to you tonight is for the rezoning of their property to industrial.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff? Wonderful, thank you. I do want to give any members of the public who may wish to speak on this item the opportunity to do so. Same rules apply here. We've got a five-minute time limit in that regard. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak in regard to this particular item? Seeing none, what is the pleasure of council in regard to the proposed rezoning of 13 West Fourth Street?
Will we adopt the recommendation?
Move by Hookstra, is there support?
Support.
Support, I'm going to give that one to Raymond. Support by Raymond, is there any discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Freeman?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnsour?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Item 10B, Planning Commission proposed rezoning of 313 Country Club Road and a portion of 1269 East 16th Street. Mr. Van Deiken.
Great, and once again, through the Planning Commission, we're going to ask Steve to come up and present you some information.
Good evening again.
Thank you, thank you. One more rezoning request tonight. So as you've mentioned, this is for a rezoning request, 1269 East 16th Street and 313 Country Club. 313 Country Club is the small piece of property, 66 feet wide by 300 feet deep, that essentially gets you access to 1269 East 16th Street. 1269 East 16th Street, you can see on the screen, that's a site plan of the proposed development on 1269 East 16th Street. 1269 is about 22 acres. The southern, I'll say two-thirds, about 15 acres, is already zoned HDR, high-density residential. The northern third, about seven acres, is zoned LDR, low-density residential. So the request, if you can see it there on the screen, is to rezone about three and a half acres. Again, it includes that small piece of property out to Country Club and then that piece of 1269. So essentially, what's happening on 1269 is that zoning line, what they're asking for, is to extend that north about 170 feet. So the HDR would go north and include about three and a half acres, leaving about three and a half acres in the LDR zoning district. The reason for the rezone request is because if you look closely at that site plan, you see that there is a drive out to Country Club. So the drive for the apartment project really has to be in the same zoning district for the apartments. So they would rezone that, that's basically that 313 Country Club property. And then you can see that some of the apartments, the four northernmost apartments are essentially in that expanded HDR zone. So the reason for the access out to Country Club is really because the, our code requires a second access to a public street when you have more than 200 units. This project is 239 apartments, so they need to have that secondary access out to Country Club. Not required, but I know our transportation department feels very strongly, from his perspective, of getting a secondary access out to Country Club to really help disperse the traffic. There was a traffic study done through all this process, of course. That's part of the normal review. But I guess I'd just point out that although it's not a requirement from his perspective, he's very much in favor of that secondary access to be able to disperse traffic, get to the light at Country Club and 16th Street. I know Keith reminded us last time that this is about the rezoning and not the site plan, so I apologize. I'm already kind of mixing the two just because they are so connected. I'll try my best. Some of the issues that we heard during the process really kind of, just the general concern about apartments, apartments in the area, the number of apartments, just sort of the development that's happening over on that east part of town, drainage, lighting, the height of some of the buildings, and as I mentioned, traffic. Those have really been the main points that we heard during the review process by the Planning Commission. I think in large part, the developer was able to mitigate quite a bit of that. You'll notice, as I mentioned before, sort of that area that isn't being rezoned on that northern side of 1269 that's staying in the LDR category, that area would remain as undeveloped. They were planning to put a 12 to 15-foot-tall berm there to help provide some buffering to the neighborhood to the north. And then they were offering to put a deed restriction on the rest of that property so that the neighbors would know that nothing would be developed on that piece. Those apartment buildings that are on that northern piece in that rezoned area were being reduced to two stories rather than the three stories of the rest of the development. I mentioned lighting, it did come up quite a bit. Their existing project at Quarterline and 16th Street does have some different types of lights that's caused some concerns from some of the neighbors, so they would be doing quite a bit different style lights, lights that would all go down rather than kind of lights that shine out like you see on their existing project. And in regards to drainage, again, I'll mention our staff has been quite supportive of the development from that perspective, essentially limiting or reducing the amount of runoff that goes to the north right now and redirecting that south into their detention pond and ultimately out to 16th Street. So I guess I just mentioned that so you know that a lot of the issues that have come up have really been, they've tried to mitigate quite a bit of that through the plan for the project. So this is a copy of the future land use map for this area. As you can see, that area is all in yellow. The future land use map has this designation as what we call suburban residential, which is essentially a single-family home designation for this area, which really all, which goes all the way from Country Club all the way to Quarterline. This is a zoning map that shows you the zoning all the way from Waverly to Quarterline. So if you can, if you pick up on that area that is east of Country Club, again, you can see that we have already rezoned quite a bit of that property to either the high-density residential, that's that orange color, or the planning and development, which is that purple over at Quarterline and 16th Street, which is where they have their first phase of this project. I point that out only because when I had the chance to go back and look at the video from the Planning Commission discussion when we rezoned the area on 1269 to its current configuration, and in large part, the discussion was making sure that we lined it up with the existing zoning of that HDR line of the church property to the east and keeping the low-density residential buffer to the north. Essentially, what's happening here is that that HDR line, again, you can kind of see where I highlighted where the rezoning request is. What's happening here is that the rezoning line, the HDR line, would essentially line up with the HDR to the west, and that you'd still have the LDR buffer to the north. I know I gave you quite a bit of material, including the staff report with all of the rezoning criteria, so I won't go through all of that, but maybe just to quickly summarize, the Planning Commission had a good discussion, a long discussion. They voted to recommend to you to approve the rezoning. It was a vote of four to three, so it was very close. And they also approved the site plan that you saw. So the site plan was approved by a five to two vote. One of the conditions of the site plan, of course, was that the rezoning in front of you tonight would have to be approved for that to take effect. But I think the way I summarized the recommendation to approve the rezoning was that it was consistent with the objective of the city to increase housing and that it was consistent with the development and the zoning of this area that's already out there. And again, just because it's so related to the rezoning, but that the plan itself was providing some benefits to the neighborhood by leaving that area as LDR, having the deed restriction on there that nothing could be done there, and providing some drainage improvements for the neighborhood as well.
Questions for staff? Yes, go ahead, Mr. Freeman.
I have a couple. They're kind of linked together. There's a C piece of property in the zoning request, one to the north, and then there's, looks like it's two residential properties that it goes around and then touching back to Country Club. There's one to the north and one to the south. In the development plan, which one of those is the proposed drive to Country Club?
The southern leg out to Country Club.
Okay. So my question then links to the proposed berm. I understand, and there's a lot of discussion about that. How far does that go then to Country Club? Does it go all the way on that finger that touches Country Club?
The berm?
Yeah.
So the berm starts, maybe where I'll say, if you can read what's on the screen where it says proposed, probably where the S in proposed is, is about as far west where that berm is. So that berm kind of starts there and goes east.
I want to make sure, we just had some conversation here with Mr. Corbin, and I want to make sure that council members understand we're not voting on the site plan.
I understand, but it's going to impact my vote of what we're talking about.
Okay, I just want to make sure that everybody's really clear on that.
Yeah, crystal clear.
That if this rezoning is approved, the site plan could change. So they're not locked into doing this. They could do anything with, okay. I just want to make, I just want to make sure.
I just want to make sure we're all singing the same music.
All right, great.
I have a question.
Yeah, did you have a follow-up? I'm sorry, I didn't want to shut you down, I just wanted to make sure we're clear.
Yeah. So if I understand right, the northern finger to Country Club would just be dormant, right?
The area that you see on the screen that stays and where it says LDR, that would be, that would be left alone. would be, that would be left alone. There'd be a berm on there, it'd be a landscape berm, but it wouldn't be developed, no, it would just be left alone. There is some wetland over on the western side of that, but yes, it would essentially be left alone with the exception of the berm that they propose.
Okay, thank you very much.
Nikki, did you have questions?
I did, so he would, the developer would leave that area vacant, undeveloped. So, let's say we didn't approve the rezoning. The developer then would do, would develop it in accordance with what's already zoned there, which is high...
Low-density residential. It's completely possible, and the developer did share with the Planning Commission some alternative plans that they had kind of went through, but to answer your question, yes, it would be completely possible to develop what's LDR now and what's HDR now with a different plan.
Sure, so, and their argument then for requesting this zoning is what, if they could develop it the way it is?
Yeah, so, they wouldn't be able to do the apartments that you see on the plan in that LDR zone, so the LDR area, if it were to be developed, would have to be consistent with what our zoning allows in the LDR, which wouldn't be apartments.
And I'm, okay, so, this is a, is it a profit thing that they want? I mean, is it a more aesthetic kind of?
Point of order.
Point of order.
We have to be careful.
Okay.
We're looking at whether two zones, whether we're agreeing to make these two zones compatible.
Right, but I'm just wondering, what is the reason if it's already possible to develop it as is? You know, I think rezoning becomes problematic when I, when you don't have a, if it's an error in our Udo, because we're discovering, of course, all these little things and as we're using the newly passed Udo. So, is this one of those kinds of things, or is this, I mean, I guess I don't, I'm not clear on what the exact purpose is.
Well, I guess I would just maybe go back and say that we require a second access to another public street with, when you have more than 200 units, so that's really what's driving that to do their apartment project.
Which I agree with, I mean, I think for safety reasons, if nothing else. Okay, so that, that, having that access requires the entire rezoning, a rezoning of the entire parcel?
Well, it certainly requires, I guess I'll say, enough area to be able to put that road in there, again, without getting bogged down on the site plan details, you know, there's some wetlands out there, and so in order to, to, you know, accommodate some of that stuff, some of those apartments that are put in that area are shifted into that LDR area to, you know, make a better site plan that fits with all of the other stormwater, wetland requirements, and, but I suppose to just put a drive out there, it could be something less, but it would still have to be, the rezoning line would still have to increase.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer?
Lynn?
Yeah, just to answer, in my memory, it wasn't an error, in this particular case, I don't think it was an error in the Udo. I think, you know, we've had a lot of text amendments and changes and grammatical errors and things like that, and I think in this particular case, and I was one of the no votes on the Planning Commission, I think what my memory is, is that we intended to keep as many of the zone, the folks who were zoned in whatever zone around the city as, to hold them harmless. And so, in this particular case, while the map coming from the map to the west shows a lot of HDR, those properties heading down south on Country Club were zoned LDR, and we intended to keep them LDR. So, if I'm, if I'm thinking specifically only about rezoning and not about the potential of what can happen on that property, it's my memory that our intention was to keep that LDR. Now, it may be that this option is better, these apartments with the berm and the, and all of that, may be a better option for the neighbors to the north, but for me, if I'm just looking at rezoning, then I think it should stay LDR.
I want to, I want to make sure we stick with questions. Thank you for answering that, but I want to make sure we stay with, stick with questions to staff at this point and don't get into discussion. No, 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 you're, you're good, I just don't want to venture into that area. So, other questions that we have for staff? Yes, Mr. Corbin?
So, just pardon my ignorance, hopefully I just want to clarify, so I understand it. When I look at HDR, the HDR already existence and the LDR to its north, those are two separate parcels that are being proposed to go to height HDR, correct? Those are two parts, separate parcels?
The only separate parcel is the, is the little piece out to Country Club, the 66 by 300-foot-deep. The rest of it is all one parcel, so 1269 is split-zoned.
Okay, because I saw, I saw property line here, I assumed that there was two separate parcels there.
The black line that runs horizontally between those two is not the property line, correct?
That's right. Neither of those black lines are, the, those are just the zoning designation lines. That is, maybe it shows up a little, you know, you can see the 1269 is the large piece on the screen, and then that 313 Country Club is that small sliver that gets you out to the road. Those are where the property lines are.
Yeah, so going back to that, again, my ignorance to that, this, if you go back to that, so they're asking to rezone a portion of this acreage to, from LDR to HDR, correct?
Correct.
Can that be split differently? Can that property, if there's no intention of doing anything different to the northern part of that property, which we're, we're trying to refrain from talking about the site plan, so I'm just saying, if there's no intention of doing anything different than what it currently is, then why are we, why are we doing the entire property? Is there, can we do a portion of that property?
You would be doing a portion of the property.
Okay, so the remaining portion to the north is going to remain LDR?
Yes, sir.
Just want to make sure of that, because I see the green outline, and it looks or appears that maybe it's all going to become HDR.
Sorry, no, that's just a reflection of where the boundary is of that property, but that northern three and a half acres stays...
The southern part of what's being proposed in that...
It's just raising the HDR line about 170 feet rather than the whole 360 feet deep that that remaining LDR is.
So, a builder, if we rezon this, would not be able to put HDR facility, you know, buildings up, you know, multi-unit complex, additional complexes there, correct?
Right.
It would be able to be developed for single-family homes, though, correct?
Well, the way rezoning gets approved, site plan gets activated, and that plan that was approved had in there the deed restriction that the developer was willing to put, that nothing would happen on that, so it isn't like a Phase 3 would come later and they'd be able to develop.
Again, that's the site plan and proposal, staying away from that, I'm just saying, is anyone who looked at developing that, that property could put single-family homes in that area?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Yeah, Quincy? Oh, Dave, did you have questions?
Just a real quick one. The developer is in possession of all of this property that we're looking at, correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Quincy?
Just a simple question, because I don't know this. Actually, I got a couple, but my first one is, on a deed restriction, what does it take to reverse that?
Yeah, so that's a good question, and the way that this was being done is that it had to be, first of all, the language had to be approved by the city attorney's office, and one of the things that was required is that the city would have to be a part of any changes in the future, so we wouldn't just allow them to just go record something new later.
Okay, so there are, I guess, legal hoops to jump through to be able to do that?
Yes, sir.
Now, saying that, another question, does that put, does that put the city at risk to be sued if that's reversed?
We do have the city attorney sitting at the table. Sorry, Vets. Mr. Duckworth, you gotta...
That's fine, that's okay. You know, I think, you know, the city's always at risk to be sued, right? It could always happen.
Would it be legitimate?
We can't control against it, but the comments about a deed restriction, it is essentially a contract. It requires two parties on both sides to agree to restrain the future use of land. There's a benefited party, there's a burdened party, and if you want to change that, those parties would have to agree upon that to be changed. So, you know, whether there's a challenge to, I'm not sure, I don't want to dream up causes of action, but, you know, there could always be suits for a variety of reasons when you're dealing with land issues, but in particular on the deed restrictions, you know, that it is a real thing, that it is treated as a, as a contract which requires both sides, and it is enforceable because of that, so, I hope that helps.
Yeah, and the city would be one of those sides.
Yeah, all right, thanks. Next question is, what were the reasons that the, and I think this was covered last time we talked about this, but what were the reasons of the no votes for our Planning Commission?
Yeah, I think, I think maybe Lynn had summed it up well, that people felt like when that line was created as part of Udo, that that was their understanding, that that was the extent of where that was going to go.
I was one of those no votes, Quincy.
That was my understanding of that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to share. I, my, my recollection was the same as Lynn's. When we were, when we were doing Udo, we looked at, at that line and wanted to try to preserve the LDR along Country Club that was there. I may have been the only one who voted no on the rezoning, but then voted yes on the site plan, and we were looking at these, these two things separate from one another, and I didn't think it rose to the level on its own without the site plan. There rose, rose to the level of being a good rezoning under the, under the requirements that we have. But if there hadn't been opposition from the neighbors, I probably would have gone along with it based on the site plan, because the way that it's set up right now is that developer could develop all of that property, including the northern part of that, right up to those, right up to those houses, if they were able to do drainage and it was a feasible thing to do. This provides, it, with the site plan, and I know we're trying to stay away from that, but with the site plan, it provides the same kind of buffer and protection that we were looking to provide when we were looking at Udo. With, with that deed restriction that's on there, it creates a much larger buffer than there would be without a site plan like the developer has, even though we're not talking about the site plan. So, that's why I voted, I voted no on the rezoning, but when the rezoning recommendation passed, I voted yes on the site plan. Yep. Any other questions for staff? Great, thank you, Steve.
Welcome.
Yeah, I would like also to open this up for public comment. If there's any members of the public who would like to speak, please remember, it's five minutes. We will be timing you. Pay attention to the three lights, and it is only this issue that you may speak on. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Good evening, I'm Mrs. Jana Schwartz of Holland, Michigan, and I'm here to speak on the rezoning of the high-density, low-density issue that we're talking about. I live at 307 Country Club Lane, right next to 313 Country Club Lane, the vacant lot, and we have another couple that live on the side of that. And I feel like we're at ground zero. We have this whole big controversy. I know a lot of people have expressed their concerns regarding drainage, wetlands, the neighborhood. We have it all at 307 Country Club. We have the neighbors' garbage cans from the unit across the street, blowing across the street consistently. Sorry, I have a bad voice.
Please make sure you speak into the microphone, yeah, folks at home will want to hear you.
Okay, we always have garbage there. We have a 313 lot that does not drain well. In fact, it's kind of a gully, so that will really have to be addressed. If that is raised, our basement could be in danger of having more water problems. About 11 years ago, we trashed our basement to the tune of $7,000. 57 years ago, a middle-aged couple looked into each other's eyes and said, this is the place for us. They purchased 307 Country Club Road, and it was, you know, in the country, the birds, the wetlands, all of it, their little paradise. And why did they relocate? They lived in another part of Holland that was having deterioration. And today, my husband and I, we're the keepers of 307 Country Club, and we really enjoy it. Being in the retirement age, we've redone the home, it's just our little paradise. I love to come to Holland. But it's not going to be my little paradise much longer if we have high-density instead of low-density zoning. As been stated, the whole strip was zoned low-density. All the homes down there are low-density, and as I understand it, if it's rezoned, we're going to have apartment buildings behind our home, not in our backyard. We have wetlands that bound also. Oh, what are they going to do with the wetlands? Well, we had a proposal, a public notice, that said that they're going to be able to get credits for some of those little wetlands, and then they can plow through the wetlands and go and make it high-density. Okay, that was public notice presented on March the 2nd. Site name's 701269 East 16th Holland Street, so I'm sure you have copies of all that. Okay. We have met with Steve Peterson, and he explained many of the facets of this construction. I learned that the construction plan is a legal document. I didn't know that, and here we have a lot of loopholes in that legal document. There's really no place for the playground, you know, the contours of the land, it's kind of like just sketched in. Our lot line, though, it's precisely marked 12.5 feet from this front of the garage facing Country Club, and the back of the garage, it's 12.1 foot, so obviously, our garage isn't straight. But if you look at the construction plan or the site plan, we have meandering contour lines. We really don't know how wide the road would be. My mother-in-law, 15 to 20 years ago, had told us that property wasn't even big enough to continue on Country Lane, but now it is. And my husband and I even went out and measured some of the roads in our little Holland Heights area. They're, you know, not consistent, they do range, there are different widths, so I guess that's okay, but the site plan, construction plan, to comfort me, would need to have measurements on it. Okay, so elevation of the road could make our basement be wet again, and that's a big concern. Okay, so, have you ever considered Michigan laws and how if something doesn't work out, perhaps we just keep pressing and pressing? I'm thinking about one issue, I come from the Detroit area. They propose a casino. Maybe it doesn't pass. Maybe they propose it again, four more years, doesn't pass, and lo and behold...
Ma'am, I'm sorry, your time has expired. We actually, we let you go a little bit longer, because I don't think the, the main one started. I would...
Okay, I'm just saying, we're depending on you to make the right decision, and I didn't see those little lights, but thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you. Sorry about that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Is there anyone else would like to address council on this issue? And would you please state your, your name and address, and I'm going to, I'm going to look at our assistant city manager and make sure he hits the button.
Jim Schwartz, 307 Country Club Road, and again, the proposed 313 road is, is the lot right next door, but I just wanted to remind everybody that because the Planning Commission voted a recommendation for it, it was four to three, and there were three people, yourself included, thank you, who didn't think it was such a good idea. And I wanted to, to mention as well, that a rejection of this rezoning does not kill the apartment complex. What it does is it says, if you deny the rezoning, it says, you're going to do what you were originally approved to do, 198 units. Now, if they want to go above 200, then they need to pave the road right next to my house. So, it doesn't kill the project, it says, do what you were approved to do, and leave that low-density area low-density for single-family homes. Now, at the, at the meeting on the 8th of March, the developer said, well, you know, doggone, we, you know, building costs have gone up, and it's just not that profitable. we, uh, you know, building costs have gone up, and it's just not that profitable to make single-family homes." So, part of what I believe, this is my opinion, and that, I don't know if it's a fact, but I think that, uh, uh, it was more profitable to, to build those bigger buildings, and so they're trying to rezone it again. Anyway, Holland Heights is, uh, I think bears more than its share of the burden of high-density housing, and I think we need a little bit of break there. So, this is, this is a compromise by denying the rezoning. They'll get what they originally got approved. The people on the north end are not going to have more water in their basement. In public hearings, several of them were there bemoaning the fact that they constantly have water in their basement. That burn is going to drain more water into their basements. You know, we're not going to fill in the next 313, which is 313 Country Club Road, which is a wetland. We're not going to fill that in, and they'll have more access for a single-family housing. Anyway, appreciate what you're doing, really. Thanks for letting me talk. And I just love this town, I'll tell you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address the counsel on this issue? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Yes, my name is Sue Brookhouse. I live in Holland City, City of Holland. I live on 1247 Hearthstone Court. Um, I'm very worried that some of you are not understanding where exactly this is and what is going on here. Uh, Ms. Aaronshorst and Mr. Corbin both had very valid questions. "I'm not quite under, I'm not understanding this. I don't know this. Um, I'm sorry that I don't understand this, or I don't have the, all the information." I don't feel like maybe the whole council has all of the information that it needs to be able to vote on a rezoning. You or the city council did a great job on the Udo. You, uh, researched it for a very long time. Uh, you went with the recommendation of the person that, or the company that researched it, and now, less than a year later, we're talking about reconfiguring that rezoning. Um, again, the planning commission voted five-four to change the rezoning. I don't really feel like that that is a very landslide vote. I live right on that property that is planning on being rezoned. Um, I've lived there almost 30 years. My neighbors and I strongly, strongly do not want this to happen. And a lot of you, maybe not a lot, but some of you don't even really know where this is, what's happening, and yet we're going to now vote on a rezoning from an Udo that you all thought was a great idea in the first place. The other problem that I'm having is, no, there was no, um, mistake in the Udo, but now all of a sudden, we're deciding, because a member of a, of a community that doesn't even live in Holland, a man who's coming in to develop this property, um, he doesn't live in Holland. I've lived here almost 30 years and have paid taxes for almost 30 years, very high taxes, and now we're going to rezone into a high-density so that he can get more apartments for profit, for profit. Okay? Then, my other problem is, is that we have so many hundreds of apartments in Holland Heights already, and we've had this for years. We don't need more apartments. And again, it's been already, um, approved that he can put apartments on the high-density area. Okay, put apartments on the high-density area. Do not, please do not vote to change that high den, or low-density to high-density. I am really asking you to think about this. If you really do not understand where this is and what's going on, please do not vote to change the zoning. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel at this time? Yes, sir, please come forward. And again, would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Sure. Mike Goro, I'm at 306 Country Club Road, which is right across the street from the property that's going to get rezoned. Um, please do not vote to rezone this to high-density. It is low-density. We went through the Udo, and it was decided then, which was a good idea at the time, to keep it low-density. And now, you're coming back to us, and you want to change this to high-density because of somebody from outside our community is coming in. Now, if you vote no on this, as was stated earlier, it will not stop the project. It will just tone it down. If they want to do apartment complexes, they can still do that. If they want to do single-family homes, which would be preferred in the area, that would be preferred to us. But please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel on this issue? Ann, would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
JR Kendall from Indianapolis, Indiana. Um, I just want to make a, a few brief points. Um, just on the evolution of the site plan, it's, it's been a process over the last year and a half. Um, and the reason, and I want to kind of walk through the reason that we are asking for the rezoning, and, and it does have to do with, with economics. Um, we paid a certain amount of, of money for the ground. As we started along with our site plan, we, we originally, we wanted to take the path of least resistance. We were considering creating rental homes on the LDR portion, and then keeping all of our apartment units on the HDR portion. Um, as we explored that further, got our wetlands, um, study completed and our delineation, and then submitted that to Eagle. Um, we, at the same time, we got questions back from Eagle about our buildings and affecting too much of the wetlands. So, um, at the same, same point in time, we were, um, told that we would need to rezone the, the Country Club entrance in order to use it for the HDR portion of our property. At that time, I, I, um, got the, um, indication from Eagle that, that our buildings that were in the wetlands and, and the HDR portion would not, would not be allowed. So, I wanted to present a plan. It, that, again, I did not, I did not want to come in here and say, "I want to rezone the whole LDR portion, put 400 units on this property." I wanted to respect that buffer zone, and so we created the berm and the, um, the 184-foot buffer zone between us and the lots to the north. Um, I had our neighborhood meeting on November 30th and got a question from, from, um, one of the neighbors if we would consider reducing those building heights to two stories. I said, "Yes, we, we will do that. We can still get the number of units that we're looking for, and we will lessen our, our peak roof, roof height is decreased, um, 10 feet by doing that." Um, so this plan was really trying to move, move buildings out of those wetlands, put them in the LDR, but not, not overrun the LDR portion, and to still provide that, that buffer zone that was, I, I know was probably the intent of the Udo. Um, the, uh, the question on the berm and why it stops where it does, that's, it reaches the, the boundary of the wetlands that are in between us and Country Club Road. With this plan, um, I know this is kind of the off-topic, but I, I want to address it. We are taking 3.1 acre, currently, 6.6 acres of our property drains into the yard drain to the north of us. We'll be taking half of that, 47% of it, and draining it into our system. So, it will, this plan, if it is approved, will improve the drainage in that area. If it's not approved, the status quo will remain. Um, secondly, the, the, between our, our structure and the, the neighbors to the north, with this plan, it provides 250 feet, I mean, some of that is parking lot, but to our building structure, there's a 250-foot distance from us to our neighbors to the north. With, with the LDR, the current zoning, um, we're only required to have a 25-foot setback, so the drainage problem remains. The, the buffer zone goes away to a 25-foot setback. Um, I did, um, Rob Behrens from Naderfeld Engineering was, did attend with me tonight, and he is, um, obvious, obviously can answer the technical questions on the civil side, which would, um, refer to the drainage. Um, finally, I'd just like to say that it was, you know, my intent with this plan was to, to respect the neighbors, respect the citizens of the city, and to, and to present something that was not overwhelming, but still provided, um, kind of the, the economic recapture that we needed to get from the, due to the cost of the land and rising construction costs. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel in regard to this particular issue? Ann, would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Dan Coto, City of Holland.
Thank you, Dan.
So, I think all of you know the amount of police calls that happened Stratford Way, the apartments that are over there now. By approving that entrance, here's what I see, and it's only, it's only my take, is it's a funnel of all those, how many apartments? Two hundred?
Yeah, we, we just got to make sure you address counsel.
So, so 400, 400 cars. It's kind of a direct route to, across Country Club to the other side where all the crimes, you know, there's a lot of crime over in that area, a lot of police calls. You guys know that. So, it's kind of a, a straight shot across, uh, Country Club Road, and I can see Country Club Road turning into a complete nightmare, especially there's a hill there. And, you know, I just don't think it's a great idea to put another entrance on Country Club Road with the possibility of three or 400 cars coming out there. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel in regard to this particular issue? Ann, would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Lori Coto, City of Holland. Um, I'm here along with all our other neighbors. Um, we moved here in 1987. We've always lived in Holland Heights. Um, when we sold our first home in 92, we sold it to a Holland Public Safety Officer. We didn't know that at the time. He said, "You know why I'm buying this house? Holland Heights is one of the safest, nicest, quietest communities." Um, for the longest time, we were promised that there would never be, continue to be more and more apartments. We have, as it's already been stated, we have more than our fair share of apartment complexes. When we first moved here, we lived in Stratford Way. It was a beautiful area, brand-new building. We all know what has happened to Stratford Way, Abbey Court, all of that. Like my husband said, lots of police calls, a lot more crime. You know, we're concerned about, yes, drainage. Most of our neighbors have flooded basements over the last 10, 20 years. I know that would be a problem if they started digging into that wetland area and all that, and the amount of noise and light pollution in the area, and I know they talk about, okay, it would only be two levels. We would rather see duplexes or single-family homes in that area. We really do not want it voted high-density. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel in regard to this particular issue? Ann, would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
I'm Paul Steers, and I live in the City of Holland. Um, our property is adjacent to the apartment, uh, proposal, and, uh, I would just like to recommend that you vote against the rezoning of it and to keep it as a low-density LDR. Um, my, my main concern is the drainage. Um, after a rain like today, I come home, my backyard is flooded, and I just, I don't feel confident that the, the, I haven't heard the specifics, but what they're proposing for the drainage, I haven't seen where that will really solve the problem, and I'm just concerned with more development back there. Without solving the drainage problem will cause even more, more flooding. And, um, and we have plenty of apartments back there, too. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel in regard to this particular issue? Seeing none, I will close the public comment in regard to this issue. Uh, what is the pleasure of counsel in regard to the proposed rezoning of 313 Country Club Road and a portion of 1269 East 16th Street?
For the sake of process, a move we approve.
Moved by Hookstra, is there support?
For the sake of process, I'll motion to support that.
Supported by Corbin. Is there any discussion for the sake of process?
Well, your honor...
Yes, Mr. Hookstra, you have the floor.
In that tone, uh, this is a bit of, um, a difficult one to, to discern. Um, I get the fact that the Heights, uh, is home to a disproportionate amount of high-density housing in the city. Um, and in, um, general good planning, uh, philosophy, you usually want to incorporate a high-density area, uh, at least in close proximity, if not intermingled with a lower density. Um, and we don't always follow that sort of process anymore, but usually it's, you know, jam it all together in one spot. So, I'm sensitive to, um, what's going on in the Heights and how that, the complexion of that area is, um, it's not so much changing, I guess, but being enhanced by higher density. The reason I asked if the developer, um, that's kind of an insensitive way to refer to you, so I apologize for that. Uh, if all of this land was in their possession, is that if we do not approve this rezoning, um, that property still belongs to them, and they have it, um, within their purview to come and develop something, um, um, that's allowed in an LDR zone. So, who knows what that could be? It could be single-family, it could be duplexes, and I don't know how that will affect the water situation in that area. I don't know how that will affect, um, uh, the impact of density. I've got to assume that there's going to have to be access to that somewhere, so there still may be a passage from that plot of land to Country Club Road. Um, maybe it will be less busy, I don't know. These are things that I can't predict. Um, so all of that say that, I've been going back and forth a bit on this. Um, and I understand the economics of it, but as I look at the, and I know we're not supposed to talk about site plans, but I would suggest that looking at the site plan is part of providing, uh, information on why we should rezonate. Uh, the site plan seems to allow for a, a pretty hefty project. Um, and I feel the impact of the previous project as I go down 16th Street. This one is a little bit more guarded, apparently, but, um, I guess I just fear for too much density occurring in, in this area. Um, so, I'm going to take a shot at this as best as I can, and indeed, I don't know everything. That's why I put a fair amount of, um, um, I can't think of a word. I trust the planning commission and in their, and in their deliberations and, and the stuff that they do, too, to make a, a good recommendation. So, I'm not going to support this rezoning, um, for those reasons, I guess, and I, and I hope I'm making the right decision.
Okay. Thank you, Dave.
You have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Uh, Mr. Vreeman?
I think after, um, talking to many of the neighbors and living in that area and utilizing Country Club as an access point coming from any of larger cities, of Grand Rapids or whatever, I think it would be in our best interest to not approve this, in that it would, in a, as a neighbor, in that area, bring exposure deeper into the heights, heights of traffic. I know there's risk factors of drainage and the things that are unknown and what may happen there. Um, but I'm, I think I'm, I'm hearing in the sense that it's higher risk of higher-density apartments and bringing that further into the Heights. And we do, I would agree with our neighbors that there is a large qu... And we do, I would agree with our neighbors that there is a large quadrant coming in Sixteenth Street of multiple dwelling homes and apartments and that's only going to increase and the things that we're looking at in the future on Twenty-Fourth Street and Waverly, that's gonna come from the other side and I think we have to look at the whole when we're talking about this piece and so therefore I will vote no.
Thanks, Tim. Other discussion from council members? Belinda?
Yes, um, listening to both sides delicately. So, my understanding is the project, if we, if I vote no, is still gonna go forward with a hundred and ninety-eight apartments. But we don't know if, is that gonna change the density? Is there gonna be more flooding? Is that a guarantee?
This is, this is just between us right now?
Okay, okay.
Yes. So, the first, answer your first question is, we, we don't know that.
Okay. So, again, for me, just right now, I think the reason they want to expand is because of the hi, the increase of construction. Is that accurate? To increase sensitivity? I guess for me, I'm, I'm, I understand the sensitivity, but with the Udo just being passed to not rezone, I, I'm tending to lean towards not approving this as well, so.
Nikki?
Thank you. And I agree with Councilmember Hookstra. This is a difficult thing. We need housing. This is certainly a way to do, by rezoning. And in all of our readings and as a sidebar, I, I just wanna tell, as, as we all know, we all study this and we've, some of us has been on planning commissions before, so we, we are, when we ask questions, we do it out of trying to further understand our situation. And I'm just not, um, with the possible increased density in this area that's already dense, I find that problematic. I also, um, having, uh, been approached with these kind of situations before, the wetlands is bothersome. Drainage is always a problem. Water is a huge problem and it, and it, it is really difficult to mitigate. And I think, um, whatever happens with this, if it is single-family homes, it'll be easier for an individual home to, um, deal with that kind of problem. Sorry, never looked at this and so anyhow, so I will not be voting in favor of rezoning.
Quincy?
Um, first of all, thanks for the engagement. Every time we have an issue that comes up and we have the community participate, we thank you for it. One of the goals that we have as a council is to get civil, civic engagement from our community members because we're here to represent you, so thank you for that. Now, saying that, a couple of our goals, um, that we have in the past have been to grow our tax base. We grow our tax base by having more dwelling units and also affordable housing. By having affordable housing or by being able to help move that needle, we build more. And I think with the current, and again, we're not talking about the site plan, but with the current site plan that we have in place, without the approval of this, I think we meet both of those. I agree with everything that was set up here. One thing that we didn't touch on again is that we represent members of Holland, Michigan. That's our number-one goal. They are our constituents and, and I think we continue, we need to continue to hold that as a high priority. So, for me, I will not be supporting this rezoning.
Any other discussion from council members? Go ahead, Mr. Corbin.
Yeah, so, we've all been around the block on this, this type of issue before. We have a master plan, that's great, but what we, where we wanna see the city go. We just finished Udo and it was a very comprehensive, very comprehensive process with the community, this, this board mem, the board members, Planning Commission. And we have this tool called rezoning, which is wonderful, right? But it has to be applied appropriately and with due diligence. And we, we entered into, when we do these master plans and we do this Udo and we have this level of participation, I think we, and, and we have property owners buying property based on that. We enter in these, these social contracts with people saying, "Hey, this is your home. This is where you live. This is your expectation with regard to your property." Now, the property was purchased before Udo, knew it was R1, um, or even then it was R1 prior to that. But i- if we talk about listening to our experts, and we have, we have a lot of experts at, at our disposal, and one is Ryan Kilpatrick. And Ryan Kilpatrick reminds us every day that we need housing. We need housing not only in the city but throughout the region. But what he does mention, and sometimes you have to coax it out of him, is we need all types of housing. All types of housing, not just large, dense population, populated housing. And, um, I've been a big advocate, a longtime advocate for the LDR and many of you know that. I argued diligently, if anything, I brought the issue forward as part of this Udo, that LDR was being sacrificed in our community. Right now, about fifty percent of our property or area is rental property. It's hard to find a single-family home being built in the City of Holland anymore. I know that we need housing and we're working on housing. We've done a great job in improving housing across the city as well as across the, the region, but we do need all types of housing. Again, I'm very supportive of LDR. I think I'll continue to spell, support LDR and, um, I think LDR is at risk as we go forward, so I, I think we need this balance a- across the city and, um, I'm, I'm not going to be able to support the rezoning. And I wanna make sure people understand, I am not looking at the master plan or the, the, um...
Site plan?
Site plan. I know it's been mentioned several times, we have to, as a, as a board, we have to ex, you know, separate ourselves from that discussion. We really have to and I know a couple of our board members are Planning Commission members, but we have to separate ourselves. That's not our duty. Our duty is to look at zoning. And zoning, as appropriate, as we went into a community process to redesign our master plan and to put things in order and take a vote on this thing, took a long time. So, I think we have a commitment not only to each other, but to the people we serve. So, for that matter, I'm not able to support this rezoning.
Anyone else? I'm once again blessed to be surrounded by smart people, thoughtful people, and if it, if it appeared that we aren't prepared or don't understand what's going on, that's not the case. We are wrestling with these issues and wanting to make sure that we understand in minute detail what's, what's going on with these. As I, as I said before, I wrestled with this at the Planning Commission level. I voted for the site plan. We're not mentioning the site plan, but, um, and it, and, and the re, the only reason I bring it up is because it has absolutely no bearing on my vote in regard to the rezoning. And that, as a, as a person who is a process person, I love process. I love the rules. I love making sure that we're following the rules. I had to divorce myself of that because I liked this site plan. I thought that this was a, a, a good site plan, but we can't take that into consideration. We can't take into consideration things necessarily like draining, drainage. And this is one of those instances where I'm hopeful that the result that we, uh, we come to here, which I, I'm able to count heads as well as just about anybody is, um, is one that is ultimately going to be good for the neighborhood, 'cause I agree with my co, like, my council members, we need to find a balance here, we need to find the right, right thing here. I'm, I'm a little bit concerned that something that might come down the line later might not be as attractive as what's on the table now with that site plan that we're not, we're not mentioning, but we don't have control over that. We have control over one thing. And the thing that we have control over is whether or not this piece of property gets rezoned from LDR to HDR. I was part of the Udo process. I remember having the discussion about this neighborhood and about this line in particular and we drew that line there for a reason. Now, if you've been paying attention in this meeting, we actually rezoned a portion of property that was changed due to Udo and the very, uh, previous item. That was a, a diff, a different issue in my mind altogether, 'cause it's the same, it's the same parcel. It's the same use. It's the, it, we were limiting somebody that was already there. This is changing the use of this property. And so while it's one of those issues where process maybe, in my mind, might possibly be trumping a, a better outcome, I've gotta go with process. I'm always gonna go with process, always gonna follow the rules on that. With that, Kathy, the, the motion on the floor is to approve the rezoning. So, by voting yes, you would be voting to approve the rezoning. By voting no, you would be voting to deny the rezoning. Just to make sure we're, everybody's clear on that. If you want the, if you want this to be rezoned, vote yes. If you do not want it to be rezoned, vote no. Okay? Everybody's clear on that? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Peters. Corbin. Coronado. No. Arnshorst? No. Hookstra? No. Raymond? No. Bird? No. Reiman? No. Mayor Box? No. Motion fails.
All right, thank you, Kathy. We'd, we'd ask that you refrain from any applause, um, because sometimes it could be jeers and we'd rather not have that either. Item ten C, Resolution to Adopt Ordinances as an Emergency Ordinance, Section thirteen dash eighteen and thirteen dash nineteen and deleting Section thirteen dash nineteen point two of Chapter three. Mr. Van Dyken?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This, uh, obviously pertains to the no-wake zones on Lake Makatawa. I think as you remember from our last study session when we talked about this, um, uh, this is more formalizing some of those temporary controls. We had petitioned the DNR about a, kind of a two-tier system depending on the level of Lake Makatawa. Uh, they went through their process and did not approve that. Uh, but what they did do, and there's, as you see here, uh, the current no-wake map for Lake Mac has these different zones. Uh, most of us are familiar with the Narrows that the high water, we had some real problems with and we had a temporary, um, no-wake zone in the Narrows. What this does is it really, it, uh, solidifies that no-wake zone through the Narrows. And then what it also does is it creates two other zones, um, through the entirety of Lake Mac. We can obviously only approve, uh, those areas within, inside of the City of Holland, but we have been working very closely with both Holland and Park Township to make sure we have a continuity throughout the lake, so it's not con, uh, confusing to boaters. Those zones would be for vessels less than twenty-six feet in length, a slow no-wake zone, uh, within three hundred feet of shore. And for those vessels over twenty-six feet in length, uh, they would be slow no-wake within six hundred feet, uh, of shore. So, those three hundred feet, six hundred feet, that can be a little confusing for some folks, uh, but if you just think that the length of a football field is a hundred yards or three hundred feet, I think most of us can kind of get an idea of how far offshore our boats need to be, uh, to do that. This is before you in the form of an emergency ordinance this evening, so it can take effect immediately. Obviously, this is something we don't use often because of timing and some of the way that things came back. Uh, we are requesting that so that we can get this, uh, approved prior to, well, actually, we are kind of in the boating season. Michigan, one, one day you're ice fishing and the next day you're in the boating season and we seem to be finding ourselves there, uh, with this particular item. If you have any questions or any legal questions, uh, we can kick those to events.
Great. Counsel, any questions for staff?
No, perhaps.
Nikki, go ahead.
Just a comment, and I'm glad we are doing it now before boating season. The question always is, is enforcement? So, this is great and I'm glad we're all doing it and everyone's cooperating, all the municipalities are cooperating, but it's always still the enforcement issue and I don't know how it'll be done. My boating friends say the entire area should be no-wake, but there you go. It's a mixed-use lake.
It is a mixed-use lake and one of the largest boat launches on Lake Mac is at Collin Park and to go from Collin Park all the way to the channel...
Super slow.
Uh, a slow no-wake zone takes quite a bit of time, you know, with, and actually with some of the development that may happen, uh, on our waterfront further to the east here, uh, that could, who knows how that could affect that as well. Uh, as far as enforcement of this zone goes, um, it's primarily the Ottawa County Sheriff. They have been very much in the loop and then the three municipalities that touch the lake and have launches on the lake have all been pretty diligent about signage. Once things are approved, getting signage up, so folks know, there's, there's, uh, the sheriff's office puts out a brochure, uh, that way they can have a little pull thing, you can take a brochure right with you with your boat. And they think, um, from an enforcement standpoint, uh, the sheriff really tries to have an educational component to that before they really bring the hammer down, um, because some folks don't know. And then there are requirements that we have to put buoys out, uh, to mark this, so we're working with those, uh, adjoining townships as well to, to make sure we have consistent buoys in Lake Makatawa.
So, will there be more buoys this year or...?
We are not planning on any additional buoys, uh, but having the same number that we had last year.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? What, yeah, go ahead.
Just a comment. So, we heard the, ever use the emergency, emergencies. Was it the last time we used it for this same thing?
I believe you're right.
All right. I just found that interesting, but, yeah.
Question approved, I intend to see Resolution of Not Boating as an Emergency Ordinance, thirteen eighteen and thirteen nineteen and deleting Section thirteen nineteen point two, Chapter thirteen.
Moved by Corbin, is there support? Support by Bird, very quick support. Is there any discussion? Kathy, would you please call the roll? By voting yes, you're voting to approve the motion, just so we're clear.
To be clear. Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado? Yes. Arnshorst? Yes. Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond? Yes. Bird?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Peters? Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you. Uh, item twelve D one, uh, Halle Celtic Society Special Liquor License, June twenty-four to twenty-five, twenty-twenty-two. Mr. Van Dyken?
Thank you.
There are a couple of gentlemen that I know have been waiting patiently.
There are and perhaps on this one, they can best describe the festival that would be held on the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth of June, uh, in the Riverview Park area. We just put the new lights out there, uh, and they're looking at holding their festival there, but if it's your pleasure...
I would, I would welcome them to the podium, uh, as long as they state their names, uh, and municipalities for the record and I'm not gonna limit them up to the five minutes as presenters, but...
Great.
We're gonna, we're gonna ask you to keep it awfully close to that.
Yeah, Craig Rich, uh, live in the great City of Holland, Michigan.
Pete Grimm, I live in the great Township of Park Township and I am connected with the clerk.
She's tired of hearing about this, believe me. And we have with us the county, uh, uh, chair, County Commission Chair, who is, uh, uh, going to be talking to you a little bit about our, specifically about our request, but if you don't mind, I'm gonna use this platform to just do a little bit of a commercial because some of you have heard what we're doing. Uh, hopefully we've run into you, we've given you a little save-the-date card. I know the mayor has done a letter for us, as has the Visitors Bureau, uh, to help us go out and do some fundraising and to, to get this thing going, but it was about a year ago last Saturday night that, uh, there were a bunch of us sitting around enjoying life and we said, "Why, eh, eh, long story short, why don't we put on a Celtic festival in Holland, Michigan?" Now, a Celtic festival, which I go to in Alma, there's a Scottish festival, there's one in Detroit, there's one in Saline, there's one in Sparta, they're all over the place, um, but not in Holland. And there's a lot of people in this town who have English, Irish, Scottish, uh, Welsh and so on roots and I see some names on the, on the, on the, uh, rostrum here that, uh, have those kind of names along with all the Dutch in town, of course, too. We're a mixed family. Uh, my wife is a hundred percent Dutch, I'm zero percent Dutch and I celebrate all those other parts of my life, uh, including my non-Dutchman, Dutchness by volunteering for Tulip Time every year. But we decided to put on this festival. It's going to be June twenty-four, twenty-five. Twenty-five is gonna be the big festival day. We're in the old Riverview Park section of, um, window on the waterfront. We have about three acres there. We're going to be putting up, uh, a giant field for Highland Games, which is caber tossing and, uh, uh, things like taking a sheaf of hay and throwing it twenty-five feet up in the air, believe it or not, uh, over a bar and throwing giant rocks and hammer throwing. This is, these Highland Games are held all over the world. The number-two, sixty-year-plus woman in the world lives here in Holland, Michigan. So, you don't think that we're a Celtic city, but there's a lot of people here who have that, uh, that love of the Irish and Scottish, uh, uh, society and, and customs and music and so on. Speaking of music, we're going to have a tent that's gonna... Speaking of music, we're going to have a tent that's going to be full of music. We have eight bands coming to our festival that we've brought in from all over the Michigan area. We have a kids' area. We have Scottish clans coming in to set up their tents in a little village, almost a Scottish clan row, where they're going to be talking about their history. And these people go and come to all the festivals throughout the world. But we're getting a lot of clans coming from all over the Great Lakes region, too. We've also got some retailers coming in to sell things, of course, to make a little money. And we've got a pub, obviously, Irish, Scottish pub that we're going to be having inside the music tent. So all these things are coming together. We're going to have a genealogy tent and all of that. The whole Saturday festival is going to be preceded the night before by what's called a Kayleigh, which is an Irish or Scottish party. We're going to have a large tent. It's 40 by 80 feet. We just got approval from the fire marshal on the design and the layout and our emergency plan and all of that. The things I've learned in the last six months, the things we've both learned are amazing. And it's really been an education. And for us, Pete's still working. I retired a year and a half ago. I've been doing this for about eight hours a day for the last, you know, like eight months at least. It's just been a love of bringing this to our town. Something new to bring us together, something new to celebrate, something that we've never done before. And we're committed to pulling it off and doing it right, doing it by the book and being able to, you know, we both have a little gray hair, some more than others. But we want to be able to hand this off to the next generation in a few years and say, look what we've started. Here it is. Keep it going. So with that as an introduction, Pete and I are here to answer questions about the festival. And we can bring Jim up to talk about the matter that's on the agenda, which is, of course, our request for a liquor license, which then, of course, has to go to the state for approval.
I would just like to add to that. We've been in this community combined probably about 100 years between the two of us. And we've always been very involved in the community. We are a 501(c)(3) charity. There's no money being made. Craig and I have been working on this for a long time. We put our own personal money to get it started. We reached out into the community. I am impressed with the sponsorships coming back from individuals as well as businesses to make this possible. We want to put on an event that we can all be proud of. We've tried our best to do the due diligence, working with the police, with the city. Those individuals are involved. We get a lot of input. We've been trying to act on it. We want to make this a model going forward and years to come, it'll happen. I do want to mention in 2004, Al McGeehan gave me a call. Maybe you remember Al. And he says, you know, there's nothing in this community outside of tulip time, really. And there's nothing there for St. Patty's Day. Wouldn't it be fun to get some friends together and we'll have a St. Patty's Day parade? I, myself, and one other individual were in the parade. There were 82 of us at the civic center on a Thursday at 5 o'clock. We came down the street. We were quite surprised. There was over 1,000 people in Holland coming down and watched that parade. Who could have imagined? In 2019, the last year before we had the COVID situation, there were 54 members in my group carrying flags down the street following the bagpipers from Grand Rapids. And I would dare say there was probably 4,000 or 5,000 people down around the street. We know there's a lot of people in the community that are proud of their ancestry, proud of the Celtic society, if you will. And we want to celebrate that and make Holland a better community for all of us.
Thank you. Questions from council members for these two enthusiastic gentlemen? Yes, go ahead, Belinda.
So will you be doing a demonstration of Celtic dancing?
Oh, we have four dance schools coming in that day, too. We're not going to do it tonight, if that's what you're asking. No.
Why not, Craig? Really?
You know, there's three people in this room who've worn a bagpipe or worn a kilt in the last week or two. And one of them is over there. But yeah, we will, that's a part of it. The dancing is part of the culture. And, you know, it's very different, too. The Scottish dancing and the Irish dancing are two very, very different kinds of dancing. The Highland fling involves a lot of arm movement. Irish dancers dance with their arms straight down at their sides without moving their arms at all. And they fly through the air nonetheless. But there'll be a lot of dancing at the festival. From everything, from little kids to the premier dancers that compete worldwide.
I will mention that we have got in this community a Mike Mitchell, some of you know him. He was formerly the regional manager for Red Cross. He is the executive director of the world's largest Irish festival in Milwaukee. And he has been a big guide for us, too, as well as Milwaukee and other places in Muskegon. We've really looked out to the experts that put these on and what do you need to do, how to do it. Because we want to put on a first-class festival for Holland.
Great. Yes, go ahead, Belinda.
I just seen that you guys are having a Highlands Games and it says, actually, next Wednesday at 7:00 PM, you're going to have practice in an informal sessions.
We are, and thanks for that. It's a little commercial. It's Wednesday night, the 20th, a week from tonight. I know you'll all be busy at a study session probably, but if you're not, come on down because it's right at Sixth and College in the soccer field that's there, not where we're having the games, but right adjacent to it. And we're, it's just an open call. Whoever wants to come down, you know, sign a waiver so you don't sue us or anything. And try to toss a caber. See what it's like. I think you get a real appreciation for that. And literally, it's a sport for men and women and even, you know, novices, even the junior division. Some young teenagers get involved in this sport and they go at it for years and years. So it's great.
Finally, will you be having a cigar tent?
You know, it's a city park, so I guess we can come back and ask for an exemption for that, too. But there's supposedly no smoking in city parks. So at this point, that would be a no. But Georgia's smoke shop is right down the street.
True, true, true. I missed the cigar party last year, so I need my invite back. But no, I'm excited to volunteer. I seen you guys were looking for volunteers. I did get a kilt, so I'm ready.
And that's your five minutes, gentlemen. Thank you.
We can't add anything into it?
Yeah, one question for Mr. Corbin.
And then Quincy.
Mr. Story can answer the question probably better because of the liquor license. What's the restricted area? Because I'm thinking axe-throwing, rock-throwing, pitchforks. I mean, really, I mean.
Dangerous.
And alcohol.
And alcohol, right. So, you know, I know these licenses have restrictions on them. And just for the public itself that are listening, what is the limitations of which the alcohol can be served in what areas?
Well, first of all, the whole area will be fenced for, because that is a requirement of Liquor Control Commission, particularly outdoor events. Plus, you know, the alignment with either city ordinance or city policy, we'll have reserve officers working the festival all the time. So obviously, we want to have a safe environment, so we'll keep the alcohol away from where the games are. There'll be spectator areas, but the playing areas won't feature any alcohol.
So you mentioned law enforcement would be there. I'm assuming first aid kits and EMS, right?
Are you volunteering, sir?
With axes and torches and shields and swords, but okay, thank you very much.
And then, you know, frankly, all kidding aside, it is supposed to be a fun event.
Right.
And, you know, so we're going to do everything, you know, possible to make sure that that's planning, that it stays a fun event. And that includes, you know, making sure that only those who are legally able can consume alcohol. And that doesn't just mean age. That also means condition. So we will be on top of that.
Quincy?
Yes, you took me way back with this one. I graduated high school in Alma, Michigan. So, yeah, so and one of my friends was the queen, the, I forget, the Scottish queen or the. Yeah, so take me way back. That's interesting. So looking forward to it. So I know what it's all about because, like I said, I went to many festivals in Alma, so it'll be fun.
Yeah, and this year sadly, the festival in Alma is going to be at the high school and not the college due to construction. But we're planning on being there. It's always on the weekend of Memorial Day. And to the point about alcohol and the games and so on, not only is there a fence between the game area and the spectators, but there are two fences about 10 feet apart to create separation. They are throwing heavy things. And there's lots of safeguards and lots of training and so on. And to the alcohol point, Pete and I just became tips-trained. And we're requiring that all of our bartenders and anybody that we get that volunteers to work in and around our pub area and in the music tent will also be trained to recognize people who shouldn't be served anymore. And we're going to be using wristband systems for entry. So we, I think we've done our homework and we have a lot of plans. Luckily, we have literally almost 100 volunteers now that have signed up to be part of this festival. I think because they want to get in free, but that's part of it.
Other questions for Mr. Grimm, Mr. Rich, otherwise, I think Mr. Story, do you have more you want to say, Jim? Of course you do.
I'm done.
Okay, all right, all right. Any other questions from council members? What is the pleasure of council in regard to the special liquor license for the Howland Celtic Society Festival? Moved by Vreeman. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Coronado. Any discussion? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Coronado?
Yes.
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Peters? Corbin? Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next, item 12D2, Vinralty Farms Civil War Muster Historic Saloon, September 16 to 18, 2022. Mr. Van Dyken, I almost said Van Beeck. Mr. Van Dyken.
He's a little taller. Yeah. This also is a request for a special liquor license on city property. This is one that has been approved by council for the last, just about as long as I can remember back, five, six years. They have the saloon out there. They serve historic mead. I've never had one. I don't know what they're like, but this is something that is very popular as part of that. Also very popular festival from September 16th to the 18th of 2022.
All right. Questions for staff? What's the pleasure of council in regard to the Civil War Muster Historic Saloon at Vinralty Farm?
Move to accept.
Moved by Coronado. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Arnshorst. Any discussion? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Arnshorst?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Bird?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Peters? Corbin? Coronado?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 12E4.1, Finance Purchasing, Public Safety Purchase and Replacement of a Fire Department Pumper. Mr. Van Dyken.
Thank you, Mayor. It seems like we're getting a little chippy already. We are. We'll keep things moving here. So this, the fire department replacement pumper is actually in the proposed next fiscal year budget. However, we're bringing this to you, and I think Lynn will do a much better job than I can, now because of a 7% cost increase as of May 1. The pumper was budgeted for a $900,000 purchase. So that cost increase is not an insignificant amount of money. So I'll turn it over to Lynn and then I think Captain Tenny will be able to give us some background on the existing equipment and what the new equipment is like.
Thank you, Matt. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. So Matt actually explained most of it, yes. So what is included is a request for the purchase of a new pumper truck. So you might recall seeing this when we looked at study session a few weeks ago and went over the long-term capital plan. So this was on our radar for a purchase that we had intended in the fiscal year '23. In fact, next week, when we see the budget, you probably will see it in there because it's already in there. Well, when staff goes, fire staff was doing their research, A, to get us an amount that we should include in our budget, and then just do their homework because, as you can imagine, buying a piece of equipment like this takes a lot of research. So when they were doing that, that's when they discovered that May 1, there would be a price increase. So they've scrambled. We've kind of talked about it. And it does make sense because that is almost, that's more than $60,000 in savings. And in the times that are crazy like this, there's even a rumor of a price increase later this summer as well. So, which, that's what we're seeing across the board in a lot of areas. So anyway, so procedurally, we have to request to amend the fiscal year '22 budget to be able to purchase this. So that's part of the request. But in fact, it won't come in until fiscal year '23 when it is budgeted, or maybe even the year after. So, but that's why the request for the budget amendment is included as this recommendation. And then one final thing, our purchase ordinance requires a competitive bidding process for expenditure like this. So the city is a member of Sourcewell, and that is a purchasing organization. And that organization, as part of their process, they actually do sealed bids, which actually satisfies the city's bidding requirements. So we are able to use their pricing. So that would satisfy that component. So now for the fun stuff, I'll turn it over to Captain Tenny to go over the fire truck that's being proposed.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council. A pleasure to be here tonight. And just kind of review some of the highlights regarding this purchase. It is a significant purchase and I, we continue to appreciate the support with regard to buildings, people, equipment that allow us to go out in the community and do the great work that we do. So again, that's a continuation of that. And again, this request is in line with our apparatus replacement goals. We have backed off on a little bit of that because of, we had an aerial to replace due to some obsolescence issues and other things like that. So we've tried to do a little bit of catch-up without overwhelming our budgets, and that's what you're seeing here tonight. Our plan was to replace this in 2023. And we, as Lynn had mentioned, we started putting the work together to look at, what does that cost? What does it look like? And through that process, we had, the manufacturer already had an increased, an increase back in January. And they forewarned us that, hey, this is going to happen again in May. And again, upwards of 7%. Lynn mentioned it's $60,000. And again, these things keep going up and up and up. So again, we try to replace our fleet, keep that fresh. We put our newer, our newer pumpers in frontline service for roughly 10 years. We try to rotate them into a lower amount of service. Maybe our Station 3 personnel operate that truck for a little bit. And then we put it into reserve status for a period of time. We have two pumpers right now that are 1995 that were placed in service at that time. We're going to be replacing one of those at this time. So we'll still maintain our other 1995 as a reserve unit. And again, we've worked with Matt on some long-term planning and tried to build that into a regular schedule. So again, I think we, our goal is to try to make sure that we have operational equipment on a regular basis. I think we pride ourselves on knowing that we have not had a witness breakdown, witness breakdown, be careful saying that. We have not had a serious malfunction on scene due to one of our apparatus. You know, that's in part to the diligence, the ability that we have to be able to make sure that they're maintained and inspected on a regular basis. And that, my hat goes off to our apparatus supervisors, Joel Cook, Andy Stokes. Those lieutenants do a great job. Brad Brower have really done a good job of doing that. So I'll publicly thank them for that. What you're going to see here is a pumper that's very similar to what was purchased in 2015. That was used as a baseline. There are a few upgrades. We upgraded the cab. Basically, that's the only change to it. We've also eliminated a generator. We've tried to reduce some cost. We found that there's been remarkable improvement on a lot of our LED lighting, a lot of our DC lighting, which is basically a 12-volt lighting system. So we've eliminated a lot of 120-volt capabilities on the truck. We don't need to run a PTO to be able to run our extrication equipment. We've built that into our budget planning as well. And we've, we're using battery-operated extrication tools. They're all self-contained. So we've reduced costs that way. Our team got together and using those specifications to be able to get to that, really pared the truck down, got, eliminated some things. We're doing some creative items with compartmentation where the manufacturer's not going to do that. We built that cost into some dealer, dealer work that they're going to do once the truck's delivered. Again, increasing prices, delivery times are going to be upwards of 22 to 24 months. So we believed it was important to get in line now if we can. So that's, those are some of the major factors behind that. We wanted fleet consistency. There may be some questions, why are we using Pierce? We found that that's a quality piece of equipment. We've been able to, we've had some field use with it. And consistency is important to us. We move people from station to station, shift to shift. To be able, to be able to jump into that apparatus and be able to know where everything's at. Familiarity has been good for us, too. Maintenance and serviceability has been really great as well. So those are some of the key factors that have really played into us, trying to stick with this brand. And I think we've seen or we've realized the value in doing that. I'll take any questions if you have any.
Great, thank you. Questions for staff? Yeah, go ahead.
So I don't pretend to know anything about fire trucks, to buy them, and what the procedure is. I'm fairly agreeing to this procedure. So, but I know Lynn is excellent at what she does and I'm sure you are as well, Captain Tenny, you've been doing this a while. does, and I'm sure you are as well, Captain Tenny, you've been doing this a while. So I just became aware of, because it looks like we're purchasing it from Wisconsin, but I just became aware of Hendrick's Motor Truck Company out of Wyoming. And I'm just wondering, are you guys aware of that, or it just, if, if they do what we're, if they build fire trucks like the one we need? Because I don't know, I don't know, I'm just asking a question. And I'm a big thrifter and financially responsible, so I'm sure you guys have done your homework and whatnot. But just a few questions that I had, because I've never bought a fire truck, and wondering, shopping local, supporting Michigan, supporting someone close by versus Wisconsin, just those are some of the questions I had. So if you can help me understand and enlighten me, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, as part of our initial process, when we looked at Pierce as a brand, we did evaluate a number of other vendors that were out there. Up to probably 2015, we purchased vehicles from Spencer Manufacturing, which is out of South Haven. So we have, we have done that. A little bit of research, and again, I'll have to back this up. We did learn through the process that we, we had a specification that required, early on, required that we had sourcing of materials in the state of Michigan. And when you compared that with other manufacturers, I believe Pierce had stated, again, that's their information, but they did state that they actually have more products from Michigan in their apparatus than maybe other manufacturers do. We did look at them. There are quality variations across the board. I would say, you know, there are, there are vehicles out there, you could buy, I hate to use this metaphor, but you could buy a Chevette all the way up to a Cadillac, depending on who the, who the manufacturer is. This is a, this particular apparatus or model we're looking at is probably, is functional. We don't have a lot of horns and whistles on it. It's designed to be very durable. There's some suspension components in this vehicle that others don't offer. That's a challenge we had when looking at other vendors. Can they provide a independent front suspension? As you know, we're going to try and remedy this, but the Collin Park Station does have some issues at the front, with the front driveway in different grades. And we thought that was important for the longevity of the vehicle, to look at different axles. We're trying everything, and that was one of the things we thought was important. But to answer your question, we do look at local vendors. We did early on, look at that. We've gotten into the path now where we're saying, okay, we, we really want to try to stay consistent. That doesn't mean we can't look at other things in the future, but I think, you know, the recommendation that we have is that we stay with this particular brand. And the other question is affordability. When we look around, all the vendors are increasing their prices. So we, we talked to, you know, our salesperson or dealer's rep, and they mentioned something about, you know, there's, there's a company called Sutphen, they're out of Ohio. You know, everybody is having these material issues and the cost with materials. So we are always open, we're always looking. But again, we're looking, it's not brand loyalty per se, it's functionality in what we already have in the system.
Thank you so much for helping me understand. And again, I don't pretend to know, I've never bought a fire truck, so I'm just asking about the process and how that goes. So thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for staff? Mr. Corbin, do you have something that you'd like to add?
Oh, I'd like to make a motion that we purchase and replace the fire department's pumper and make the appropriate budget adjustments as necessary.
Moved by Corbin, is there support?
Support.
Support by Byrd, any discussion? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Aaron Sors?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
And will we get a little dance before, after we get it?
It is killed.
Yes!
I didn't think Mr. Rich would do that, so I mean, but we, again, we're looking at probably 2024 on delivery, and I still think we owe some of you a visit to our, to the aerial that everybody committed to purchasing. So when you get the opportunity, please feel free to stop in, and we'd like to show that to you. So thank you again for your support.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda, 12E6.1 gifts. Kathy, would you please review the gifts for us?
The city manager's office is pleased to report the following gifts. Public Safety Services Police Operations miscellaneous, Cheryl B. Smith, $50. Public Safety Services Police Operations Officer Kinder Retirement Gift, Holland Police Officers Association, $448.50. Downtown Group, Windmill Island Gardens, Community Garden, anonymous donor, $62. Parks and Recreation, South Press Scholarship Program, cash receipts, reporting dates February 28 through April 3, 2022, $195. Parks and Recreation, Windmill Island Garden, no. Garden Memorial Maintenance, the Holland Zeeland Community Foundation, Bassino Wermeyer Foundation, $400. Parks and Recreation, James Harrington P. Trust donation of $5 million towards a new public recreation center. Parks and Recreation, donation of a public playground, ODC Networks transfers at Sally Smolley Natural Playground to the City of Holland in accordance with the Agreement of Public Playground, signed between the city and the ODC Networks on July 21. The project cost is in excess of $400,000 and open to the kids on October 2021. It is recommended that these donations be accepted with appreciation, credited to the appropriate account, and an expression of gratitude be forwarded to said donors.
Thank you. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the gifts?
Moved to approve those gifts, receive them with gratitude, with the exception of the large one that needs a personal visit from our mayor.
I think that we can make that happen.
I think we can.
Yes, we can. Is, any, is there a second to that?
Support. Support.
Moved by, moved by Vreeman, support by Byrd, any discussion? I, I think it does, it does go to note the, not only the extent, but the size of the gifts that we're receiving. It's absolutely fantastic that people are willing to, to give so generously to this community, and the benefits that we reap from that will be felt and enjoyed for generations. So, yes. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item, 12E6.2, urban cooperation agreement. Set public hearing on agreements with Fillmore Township for April 2022. Mr. Van Dyken?
Yes, I can keep this fairly brief. We have been talking to you in study sessions about an urban cooperation agreement, which I think the cooperation is the key word in this, between the city and Fillmore Township. That would bring a number of properties into the city of Holland, and would also extend water service to those portions of Fillmore Township that are north of the highway. So there, there are two things that are married together. One is an annexation agreement, and then the other is a water service agreement. Dave, should you choose to set the public hearing this evening, Dave will be here next week to go into some more detail on that water service agreement and what it looks like. But it's very similar to the relationship that the city, Holland's BPW has with Park Township to provide water services. So with that, the only action that we're asking you to take this evening is to set the public hearing for next week to discuss the urban cooperation agreement.
Great.
Motion to support item 6.2, to set a public hearing for April 20, 2022, on the urban cooperation agreement with Fillmore Township.
Moved by Corbin, is there support?
Support.
Support by Coronado, any discussion? Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Raymond?
Yes.
Byrd?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Coronado?
Yes.
Aaron Sors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Great, thank you. Item 13, communications from the city manager.
Yeah, I do have a couple of quick items this evening. Reminder, next week, we do have a regular council meeting. It's kind of odd that we go back-to-back with regular meetings. And then that next day, Thursday, the 24th, there is a budget, 24th, 21st, there's a budget study session. There's a public open house for the ice rink from 6:00 to 8:00 PM in council chambers next Monday. So if you can come to that, that would be great. It's going to be a really good process to get to that, you know, what we're actually going to build. Enjoy spring. Hopefully, some of you have been downtown. If you haven't, the new urns are in, and our Parks and Recreation Department has done an absolutely stunning job again, as always. We take them for granted sometimes, of decorating those urns. And it's really, I think, done a, had been a great first step in that streetscape refreshment. So enjoy that. Tulip time is right around the corner. A sure sign of that is that Windmill Island Gardens opening day is on Monday, the 18th. So they will open for the year out at Windmill Island, and the staff out there is doing a great job at getting that spruced up. And then finally, the Holland Youth Advisory Council is having an Easter egg hunt on the 16th at 10:00 AM at Collin Park. I'm a little disappointed that's only for those that are 10 and under, so we're not going to be allowed. But if you have youngsters and, or grandkids, perhaps that you can get out and then have them enjoy that Easter egg hunt, put on the youth advisory, put on by the youth advisory council.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Matt. This evening, I, I do have a proclamation for Fair Housing Month for the month of April. Whereas, April 11, 2022 marks the 54th anniversary of the passage of Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, also known as the Fair Housing Act, which created national policy for fair housing. And whereas, the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in housing based on race, color, religion, sex, familial status, national origin, and disability, and commits recipients of federal funding to affirmatively further fair housing in their communities. And whereas, the laws of the state of Michigan affirm and reinforce this policy. And whereas, City of Holland Ordinance 1784 adopted by this city council on August 8, 2020, reading in part, "No person or persons shall discriminate against any person or persons within the city regarding the advertising, listing, showing, inspection, negotiation, purchase, sale, exchange, ownership, or financial, financial interest in real property, or the leasing of occupancy of real property on the basis of age, race, national origin, color, disability, education, familial status, sex, sexual orientation, gender expression, gender identity, height, marital status, religion, source of income, or weight," demonstrating the city of Holland's commitment to fair housing. And whereas, in keeping with the city's mission to maximize livability, the Human Relations Commission works to promote diversity, equity, and inclusion in housing by partnering with the Fair Housing Center of West Michigan, Good Samaritan Ministries, Community Action House, Lake Shore Disability Network, Legal Aid of West Michigan, and Mediation Services to advocate on behalf of city residents who face housing discrimination. And whereas, through its tenant landlord and fair housing community trainings, the city joins the state and federal government in educating community leaders, property management, and housing associations regarding fair housing laws and policies to bring education and awareness of housing discrimination and fair housing laws. And whereas, our social fabric, the economy, health, and environment are strengthened in diverse, inclusive communities. And yet, more than 50 years after the passage of the Fair Housing Act, barriers to equal housing opportunity persist throughout our nation. Now therefore, I, Nathan Box, Mayor of the City of Holland, Michigan, and members of the Holland City Council, do hereby proclaim April 22, Fair Housing Month. In the city of Holland, an inclusive community committed to fair housing and to promoting appropriate activities by private and public entities to provide and advocate for equal housing opportunities for all current and prospective city residents. Given under my hand and the seal of the City of Holland, this 13th day of April 2022, Mayor Nathan Box. The only other item I have is to piggyback on what Matt said. Tulip time is right around the corner. Not only are there wonderful tulips in the planters downtown that were grown in our grow house, I saw the first tulip in the wild this morning at the corner of Columbia and 8th, right along the Makatawa Bank wall there. It's right next to Snowmelt. It's on the north side of the street, so it gets a whole lot of sun. There, and with days like we've had the last couple of days, there are going to be a whole lot of them right around the corner. And that's what, all that I have this evening. Appointments, motions, communications from council members. Mr. Corbin?
So just communications from, and discussion, really. We, we talked about this before, is that when we have something that we'd like to talk about, this is the time to do it. We had a number of people attend this evening, speaking to an amendment of an ordinance we passed last year. It was quite a few people. I'm not aware of an amendment. I know that Councilman Byrd presented some language that evening. I know that we kind of, I don't think there was a second, if I recall, there wasn't support for the, at that period of time. It was late in the evening, or early morning at the time, and I think we had a lot of discussion, and, and we thought maybe that should have been brought up sooner for that, you know, having it vetted and discussed. But if there is an amendment out there, I'm not aware of it, an official amendment to the ordinance. So it sounded like to me, according to some of the speakers, was there was one presented to the city. I'm not aware of one. So if there is one, I'd like to see it, and that's, that's first. And I don't know if you have a draft of it, Quincy, since you were the one that made the motion. So I, I think for us, there was a number of people asking not to repeal, which is great, right? That's not what we want to do. It's not about repealing an ordinance, that this is a wonderful ordinance that was passed. Maybe there was a gap in it, I don't know. But that's, you know, something that maybe we can look into, to make sure that we aren't missing something. But I think it wouldn't hurt for us to at least entertain it in a, you know, informal discussion as a board to see what maybe our attorney says about it, and what fellow board members think about it. I certainly don't want to have a gap which somehow impacts someone's First Amendment's right, First Amendment rights. I just, I, I want to make sure that we're protecting all freedoms and all different groups, including our religious freedoms. So again, I don't want to belabor it this evening, but I thought I'd at least bring it up, see what you all feel about it before we adjourn this evening. And if I don't get a chance to speak again, just for the, to all of you and to the public, good Friday, and as well as happy Easter, going into the weekend for those who do celebrate that holiday. So, thank you.
Great, thanks, Scott. Anyone else? Yes, Belinda?
I had an email, and I just wondered if I would share. I'm new to this, so I don't know, but if it's okay to read it. It was from Mallory Sheerbeck. She says, "Good morning, Belinda. I just wanted to say thank you one more time for your assistance in advocating for us with the LG Chem addition. I hope you will pass on our thanks to other board members who showed us so much kindness and understanding during the process. Many board members took the time to either have a conversation with us, came out to our homes, or drove by to view our concerns. Going into this was very daunting, and we were not sure how, how our concerns would be received. I am grateful at how many of the board members listened and agreed with our concerns. I am pleased to say that LG listened to many of our concerns and even used some of our ideas in changing their design. The relationship I have been able to build with them has been positive. One, and I give them some credit, give them that credit to those who spoke up for us in the early stage of this process. Again, thank you so much for helping us. So blessings, Mallory Sheerbeck." And I just want to say, to, to piggyback on what Quincy said, we represent our constituents, and I know we always try, we always have the best intentions to hear everyone and do what's best for the greater good. But as you can see here, LG Chem and the residents came to a happy resolution, it sounds like. And so I just want to say that it takes a village, and I'm proud to be a part of the team, and just proud to collaborate with my colleagues. And listening to our constituents is very important, as we did tonight. You know, it's very painstakingly to do when, you know, it's going to drive us economically to a higher tax base, and where, how we, how we have a win-win situation, where in this case, it was a win-win situation. So thank you. Proud to be a part of the team.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Quincy?
One last comment, and I'll make this short, too. Just speaking on what Scott said, I'm all for that. You know, who you, who were here during the August 20 morning, I did present something. But so, I'm, I'm 100% for reviewing this again. And I'll leave it at that. And just thankful for our community members coming in. We had a lot tonight.
Dave, and then Lynn?
Yeah. In response to Brother Scott's question or inquiry, I, I'm all for having a clarification made for that, because as I recall, even though it was early, early, specifically asking our city attorney if the language in the ordinance protected religious organizations. And I was assured, and we were assured at that time by our attorney, that the given language did afford those protections. And I think there may be some other legislation outside of this ordinance that might address that, too. But I think it would be a good idea to have a clarification from our attorney. Just, I mean, apparently there's a difference of opinion, so it would be good to clarify that. That's all.
And I would say, too, the people who spoke, and we always ask the municipality, they were from all over. So I don't know our responsibility either, but as you say, clarification's always a goal. But as you say, clarification's always a goal.
Lynn?
Yeah, I was going to make that point too, Nikki, that two-thirds of the people who spoke were not from the city of Holland. And so I, while I'm, I'm, I'm all right with making some clarifications on that particular thing. I think it would be something that we should discuss on how we make these decisions based on, we, we ask for a municipality for a reason. And two-thirds of the folks who spoke were, were not from here, from Ganges to Georgetown. So I think that's significant.
Yeah, Scott.
Yeah, just to clarify, and not to, not to be argumentative at all, but when we pass that, I would say 90% of the people that came in, in support of the ordinance weren't from the area. And we had to have a, well, we had a hard time clarifying where they were coming from. So, well, you may disagree, but I'm just saying is, the point is, it's not about where the people are coming from. It's whether or not we have an ordinance that doesn't, that prohibits the free expression of religious freedom. That's, that's my concern. And if someone were to bring another piece out of ordinance and say, there's another part of that ordinance that limits another part of free expression for anyone else, I would say the same thing. If it's regarding handicap, you know, or race or gender, I would say the same. There's a gap in our ordinance. We probably should just review it, make sure. And then it gives us also the opportunity, maybe some of these people who are involved in that process, and by clarifying it would help us clarify our position as, as a council. I think it's only a good due diligence effort on our behalf.
Anyone else? My, my recollection is similar to Dave's. It was early, early morning hours. And I think that what we were, what we were hoping to get was some clarification from the city attorney's office as to whether or not, what was in the, what was in there was already covered. And so with head nods from folks, because that's kind of what we do in this, is that, can we make a request of the city attorney to get us an opinion on whether the language that we have now already covers?
I guess I don't know what the language in the amendment is. That's the key here. So I, I've not seen an amendment, so I don't know what they're.
Yeah, Matt?
Might I suggest that I believe Keith has been contacted by these folks in that time period where I was off on vacation prior to his leaving. I've got my notes to discuss that with him. And we can come back to city council with a best past, best path forward based on the information that he may actually have that none of the rest of us have.
That sounds good to me.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
And I'm good leaving it as it is, but yeah.
I'm, I'm not sure we're bringing anything forward right now, other than saying, let's, in my mind anyway. Because I'm, I agree with you on that, Jay. I do. I'm, I don't think what we're, what we're saying is moving anything forward at this point. It's, let's, let's get some clarification on what it is that we're actually talking about. Scott doesn't know what the, what the amendment language is. I'm not sure Quincy remembers what the amendment language is. Yeah, I don't have, I don't have a problem with going back and, and having us as, as a council look at what language is there and then making a determination of whether we want to do anything with it or not. Yeah, we're, we're not just, I don't think we're deciding to do anything or to do a path forward. But other than, say, to get, have staff get us some more information so we can decide if we do want to move forward with it or not. Is that, am I, am I?
And I think this, this is exactly what we did when the ordinance was presented to us. It was kind of, do we want the city manager to look further into it? I think that was Mike Trithui, who mentioned that. But, you know, the only way to get the question off the table is to make sure it was researched and brought back to us for a recommendation. So I think that's what we're, I'm hoping that we can do is, for me, I would like, I don't know what the language is, so I have no idea what they're, but when, when somebody speaks of their inability to express their faith and that somehow there's some language in there that restricts that, I want to make sure that we, we're not doing that.
And I guess to be, to be clear with the process, somebody want to, want to make a motion to ask the, ask staff to do it? And if we get five votes to do that, we, we move forward?
Certainly I'd ask them, the, the staff to entertain, or to look into the text amendment that's being, I, I don't know, we don't have a text amendment in front of us, but there was, there's apparently some text language.
I think it, I think it was what they gave to you, Matt. They handed you something.
Oh, was that this evening? Who, somebody received something from the clerk. Was that a?
Oh, that was a petition. That was a petition.
Oh, but it's not the text language.
Isn't, isn't.
Yeah.
Freedom to express religion covered at the federal level?
Linda?
No, I just thought, I thought this was all referring from Anna Hendrickson. When she's been speaking on this, I thought she was the one that was saying.
I think, I think, again, I think there's a lot of confusion right now. And I don't know that, I don't know where exactly we are with this, right? So I would hate for city council to take an action on something that we don't actually understand at this point.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Hookstra.
We have an established ordinance on the books before us. So I think the most prudent, prudent thing to do at this point is just to get clarification on what we have and what it means. A consideration of some other proposal, I think is a completely separate action beyond what we have right here.
I, I concur. And I think we, we should, if we are, well, I, maybe not place anything on the table more officially, but we can ask the city or our manager to bring something back to us after reviewing the current ordinance and seeing if there's any gap. And our attorney's here. Is there any gap in our current ordinance for the free expression of religion? Is there any gap there that we should be aware of? And that's just examining our current zoning ordinance.
And, and that can be done by just a request?
Yeah, I think we can have that request and have somebody bring that back to us.
Well, I'll make a motion that we ask our city manager and slash attorney to take action on that and bring it back to us. If their earliest convenience.
I support.
Question.
Yeah.
Do we need to do that? I, I don't remember ever having to take a vote to request information.
Not for requesting information, as far as I know. We asked, asked them a question.
I withdraw my support.
Wait a minute.
We'll just ask the city manager to follow up on it.
I, I think, Matt, you've got a clear understanding. I think what, what you said was, let's take a look and see what path forward, if there, if there needs to be a path forward. We get some recommendations from city attorney and staff. Yeah.
Any other, yes, Lynn?
I just had one other thing. Thank you for making April 2022 Fair Housing Month. I wanted to point out something that is often lost in our non-discrimination ordinance, and that's the source of income protection that we have in the city of Holland. We are one of, I think, four municipalities in Michigan that protect source of income. And, and that's significant because it's difficult for people to find housing. And when they get a housing voucher, which is mostly what we're talking about when we talk about source of income, when they get a housing voucher, they want landlords to be able to take those vouchers, accept them as, as a payment in addition to the subsidy that they receive from, from the state of Michigan. And so to have a source of income protection on the books is really, is really valuable. And, and so the work that Esther does at the, at the Human Relations Commission and all the organizations she works with to encourage landlords to participate in those programs is, is, is really invaluable. So kudos to the city of Holland for passing that years ago.
Great. Anyone else? All right, one more motion.
Motion to adjourn. I move to motion to adjourn.
Move, support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you.